Mayor Nelson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Colicott?
Here.
Councilman Pitts?
Here.
Councilman Rossini?
Here.
Councilman Fasenelli? I will report that she's indicated she will be arriving. She's detained with a family medical issue.
Okay. First, how the plans are released is Robbie would you lead us in the pledge?
I flag up your heart. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have public comments. See, one public. Do you have a comment?
I'm not allowed to comment.
Yes, you are. Oh, okay. We'll go on then to strategic planning session. I'll turn it over to you.
Mayor, members of the council, whoa. Guess I'll stand back here. Mayor, members of the council, and our citizen who's here with us tonight. We have four agenda items before us. They essentially are the final four things that we need to do to enable me to put together a final plan draft for your review, which we will be sharing with the community a week from tonight in this room. The first of the four agenda items concerns a revision of the vision statement. There are two attachments I would call your attention to on this item. The first is called Proposed Villa Park Vision Statements. This is the slideshow that the mayor and the mayor pro tem presented at the September 19th council meeting. This is the vision statement that ultimately was approved that evening by a majority of the council. The council, at the close of the planning portion of that council meeting, asked me to see if I could wordsmith it a bit to make the document flow a little easier, make it easier for members of the public to digest, to understand, and perhaps to even shorten it a bit. I'm not sure I succeeded in the shortening portion of that, but I think by breaking this down into a series of priorities that were grouped according to common themes, it at least made this document easier to understand.
Excuse me, Jim. We don't have hard copies of the vision statement. Do you have copies handy?
Oh.
I know you emailed it to us, but we've...
Do you mean this document here?
That document, correct.
Okay, because this was posted with the agenda.
Yeah, we've got to receive it electronically. We don't have hard copies.
Oh, okay.
It's the full agenda.
While the city manager is distributing those, the other handout that relates to this particular agenda item is titled "The City of Villa Park 2022 Vision." And this is presented in the format that it would ultimately appear in the draft strategic As you can see, there are eight priorities. The content did not change. So what the council approved in this document appears here, just in a revamped, revised format, a little different wording, and we did apply some specifics in some cases so that instead of just simply saying, "We want to be the safest city in Orange County," in keeping with how vision statements typically are written, we pinned down visiting with the authors of this document, the mayor and the mayor pro tem. I was able to question them about what the specifics were behind some of the language in the original document so that we were able to put it in this one and allow both the council and the public to understand more clearly what we meant by the safest city. And that's just one example. There are certainly others in the document. No fiscal impact on this. With that, I'm open to any questions or comments from the council, and then I would throw it open for council discussion in terms of whether you want to approve the revision as written or approve the revision with some revisions.
What's your pleasure?
I don't have any at this point in time.
Robbie?
The only question I had is how are we going to guarantee no flood insurance to our residents? I'm not sure we want to put that in a written document trying to guarantee something that we can't guarantee.
Well, the way to guarantee that is to...
It says here, "No residents will pay flood insurance."
Yeah.
That, to me, is a guarantee and can be construed as a guarantee, that the city will support and pay and do whatever we need to do to prevent them from paying flood insurance.
Yes, the reason... Flood insurance is required whenever you're in a flood hazard area.
Got it.
And we're in the... We're actually located in the Orange County Flood Control District. So to achieve this, we would need to work jointly with the Orange County Flood Control District to get the needed improvements to resolve the flood hazards. Now, whether we could achieve that in five years or not is quite a question.
I just refrain. I understand that, and I'm fine with that. I'm just saying, I don't believe we need to word it the way we word it, because it almost construes a guarantee to them that they won't have to. And if we do everything we're supposed to do, but all of a sudden the insurance companies or whoever, regulation says you've got to have it, then we put something we couldn't deliver.
Okay, then I guess the easy answer, that would be to think we will work to eliminate flood hazards in our city. And FEMA determines flood hazards.
Mr. Mayor?
My point was that we're going to try to remediate the flood hazards so that be remediating it when they have flood insurance.
I know, but it says no flood insurance.
But we could indicate that but not have the point that no resident...
We'll take strides to do things to remediate, but I wouldn't say no...
I'm saying I agree with you.
Yeah, I understand, Robbie, and I agree with you.
Take that part out about guarantee... That part about no one would need flood insurance.
Right.
We can say, hopefully, no one would need insurance.
Well, I hope not.
Hopefully, no one would need insurance. But I think the point...
I think there are governing bodies outside of us that will affect that, and we can't control them, so I wouldn't make a commitment on their... That's my only point, don't make a commitment on their behalf.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I'd like to thank Robbie for mentioning that. I have a slightly different interpretation. It's more along the lines of remediation, but I think it's a good point to bring up. I've been personally contacted by residents regarding this subject and have tried to work with our city manager so that the residents have a better understanding of why things are the way they are. And if I could just ask Mayor Pro Tem Colicott, is this an issue where the facilities, meaning the storm drains, need to be enlarged and/or improved to handle greater flow? Or how does this all work so that we can hopefully get to that point?
Okay, well, flood hazard areas are, again, determined by the Federal Emergency Management Agency.
Okay.
And they actually develop maps showing areas that are subject to flooding by a certain frequency. And yeah, the way... So if you're in a flood hazard area, you're required to pay flood insurance.
Right.
And you can acquire that in various manners. But if you purchase a house in a flood hazard area and you have a mortgage, the banks mandate that you have flood hazard insurance. If you're out of a flood hazard area, you're not required to get flood insurance. And yes, the way to correct that is to improve the drainage facilities.
Okay.
Certainly, we would not want to see any residents or our schools... Three of the schools located in the city are also in, at least in part, in flood zone area. We would not want them to be impacted by floods. So the... Yeah, we don't want... I agree that remediating flood hazard areas is, as you suggested, is a better statement of what our intent is.
Right.
And that would be achieved by working with Flood Control District to correct flood... To improve our drainage facilities, and also, you know, we would have to also support improving our drainage facilities so that our residents aren't subject to flooding.
Jim, if you could make note of that change, that'd be great. Thank you.
So how would you redo that, too?
I would just take that part out about the insurance.
Well, you're saying you're doing... You're doing, "All flood hazards been remediated." Just say, "All flood hazards been remediated." And take the other part out? Yes, do that. Let's take... Do that. "All flood has been remediated." Let's do that and strike the rest of that sentence. Are there other comments on the visions? I have one comment. I think that we have too many, and we should probably cut down on some of them. Jim's indicated he's never seen anyone with this many. We have eight. Are there some on here that we can drop? Maybe get down to five?
This is the longest vision statement I've ever been associated with.
One paragraph.
Yeah, normally, they are. It's a paragraph of four, five, six sentences. Normally, strategic planning is done in concert with the budget process. We kind of got sideways of that this particular year, but one way you might think about paring these down, if that's the council's wish, is to look at things that may not realistically be able to be funded in the next five years due to the amount of resources they might take to do, or how realistic it is that any resources could be generated for a particular project or item. So that may be one way to approach paring this list down. Another might be to just simply focus on the word priority there and look at the eight items and ask yourself, okay, of those eight, if we were going to cut it to four, what are the four highest priorities for me within those eight items? And that might be of some help as well to bring it down.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As perhaps a suggestion, number seven discusses some intangible qualities. Although important, they don't appear to be necessarily tangible, achievable goals, achievable in the sense that people can have a metric to measure them by. Just an idea, perhaps that can be encapsulated into one of these other vision statements to reduce this a little bit.
Just a comment here. The first one, quality of life. I am concerned about anything that would be... We would like a vision statement that we can successfully achieve as opposed to a vision statement that we would idyllically like.
Yeah.
And so with... Well, for instance, I don't know... We could do a lot of things and not guarantee that our property values go up greater than anywhere else. That would be a very difficult thing for the council to control because it just, you know, we don't control the housing...
Economy.
Economy, if you will. So I'm a little bit concerned of those types of things, if you put those out there. While there are certainly visionary goals, and I don't mind, I'm thinking a vision... I would look for a vision that is something attainable, that we can realistically reach, like Mr. McCombs mentioned about cost-wise. So certain things are intangible that, you know, I mean, I would offer, you know, there's a couple of things that you always worry about. We had a crime incident on Thanksgiving Day that is virtually, you know, whatever. But I take, for instance, the ending of that circumstance ended in another city, so they pick up a fatality in their city that they had nothing to do with. It's just the car chase ended there. So you kind of end up... Some of these things are, you know, you're not going to really be able to control. You could take a lot of measures for them.
Right.
But you can't eliminate or whatever those things. So I take your point about FEMA not... We don't control FEMA, so we can't, you know... We could do all the right things, and FEMA could say, "Well, give us another three years, and we'll reevaluate." So you won't make that timeframe. So we... The council may have done everything, but the city residents may not say, "Well, you told us we would be here, and we're not there." So I don't want to set us up for failure.
Yes.
So I would encourage you to be very realistic in your assessment of what your vision looks like. And a lot of these are really good, but I think if we were to do all of these and you were to give me a candid appraisal, we can't afford all of eight of them right now.
I concur.
I can't do all of those. So I could tell you that without doing much analysis, if it doesn't make... So I think that would be my suggestion, that in context, you look at it that way, for what it's worth.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just scanned through these, and I think they're really... I've been able to distill it down to actually five common themes. One is maintain our infrastructure, maintain our low crime rate, develop a community center, maintain aesthetics, and be physically solvent. And even on the aesthetics, a part of that is maintain the infrastructure, but I think, you know, we can boil it down to those five. So it'd be maintain our infrastructure, maintain low crime rate, develop a community center, improve our aesthetics, and maintain our physical... I know solvency isn't the right word, but continue to be physical...
Favorable financial position.
Favorable financial position, yeah.
Fiscally prudent, conservative.
Well, I would suggest we just go through each one of them and determine whether we want to keep it or not. And you have all five of those in here.
Right. That's what I said. I went through all eight of them, and these are the common themes from all of them. And I think we could develop, if we wanted to get it down to a lower number, these are the common themes. So we could just develop a vision statement that addresses those and...
Are you saying just to take it down to just those five themes?
Yeah, well, because they're common. I think that covers everything in all the vision statements.
Remember, a vision statement is a statement. It's usually a paragraph long.
Yeah.
And it supports what efforts we're going to undertake in the city to achieve the goals that we've set for ourselves. That's what a vision is. It shouldn't be eight pages, five pages, four pages. It'd be one paragraph.
I think...
If you look at most vision statements in corporate world and other worlds, that they're one paragraph.
We're saying the same thing, I think. I think we can say those... Identify those five items that are common, you know, those five themes covered in the eight vision statements that are provided, and we can distill that down into one paragraph.
I think I would offer that in the highlighted... In June 20th, June 30th, you had that bolded section there, and if you would have had a sentence that said, "The primary..." You know, "Our focal areas or something of those five areas," add it as a sentence to that, you've accomplished what you're trying to seek in a single paragraph.
Which one is this?
If you look at... It says, "On June 30th, on June 30th, 2022, residents of Silliparque live in one of the most desirable residential communities in California, enjoying a quality of life rarely duplicated elsewhere. The city remains focused on five priorities..." Instead, eight, five priorities that the continued sustained its 60-year reputation is a hidden jewel, those being blank, 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 blank that you mentioned.
Okay, gotcha.
And I think you've accomplished exactly what you want to accomplish in a paragraph.
Okay, good.
I would offer that.
I would concur with that. I think that analysis hits the nail on the head.
What were the five priorities again?
Infrastructure's here, low crime rate...
Community center.
Community center, and that's, you know, supporting community programs. That's a community program, I would think. Aesthetics and good physical...
Physical stability.
Yeah, physical stability.
What do you think, Jim? It's a lot different than eight, huh?
I'm very grateful to Councilman Pitts for returning us to where the vision exercise that we had for September 19th was taking us in the first place, and that was the one paragraph. It just says, "Five years from now, this is where we are in the areas that are important to us." So I think it's going to be a lot easier to accomplish, frankly. It will save us some time, some dollars. Now, I do think that there probably are some other things that are in here that will still wind up becoming important to you as time goes by. You know, the traffic situation comes to mind as... That was not one of the five, but it is something that I heard mentioned often. And not only in connection with the schools, but in connection with cross-traffic...
Correct.
Across Villa Park, heading to the 55 freeway, and as areas around Villa Park continue to grow and get more and more people who are trying to get to jobs somewhere other than the city in which they live, we're going to see perhaps some increased traffic from that. But I'm not here to influence the choice because it's your plan. I'm simply here to facilitate a product, an end product, that works for you and helps you achieve the things that are truly important to the five of you and to the community over the next five years. So I guess my next question as the facilitator would be, the mayor pro tem has proposed five areas. How do the other four of you line up with those five areas? Are those the five areas? Are we prepared to...
Well, back to Vince's point, can you measure all five of them? And can you show success at the end or middle, beginning to end? I just use a community center for it. Can we guarantee that? And can we measure getting that over the next two years? Because you all put some aggressive dates in here when you're going to have a community center. And there's a whole thing of funding and property and a whole bunch of other stuff that goes along with it. So be real careful, again, about making commitments that we can't deliver on...
Yeah.
...in timeframes and other things, and that we can measure, and so you can show progress. Because there are going to be scorecards for these, I'm assuming, when you finish.
I'm not sure that those are a guarantee. I think it's a vision for what we would like in the future. I appreciate your caution. I appreciate your concern and the dialogue regarding it, but making them an out-and-out guarantee, I think, is a bit of a leap. I think it's a goal. It's a goal.
Okay, but your dates... You've got dates in here in the documentation.
Right, I understand that.
And I just...
And it's a vision statement, and I think...
These dates were just what some other people provide. It's not the date that's all of us agreed on. We can all agree on the date.
Yeah, we're getting to the dates.
I think it is something that you can measure. You can measure whether you have it or not.
Right.
It's going to be there or not. But as far as a date, and we've already started on that, working with the foundation to do something on that, so I think it's probably achievable over the next five years. I don't know what it's going to be, two years, but certainly over five years.
It is two years. That's aggressive.
Well, I'm saying certainly...
Based on the architect, you said it would take a year to build it.
I'm saying certainly we ought to be able to do it over five years, but not two years.
The purpose of dates, the purpose of metrics of any kind are to provide targets for achievement.
Correct.
So if you say, gee, we'd like to have a community center someday, and that's what's in the vision, it doesn't tend to get people motivated to, well, if we really want to have this, if a majority of the community really wants to have this, and our goal is to have it by whatever the date is, then we better have an action plan in place now that includes some of the steps that you mentioned, the funding and, you know, are we going to convene some sort of a community committee that's going to provide input on what programs a community center might offer, where it might be, if it's not going to be upstairs, some of those kinds of questions. But until you have a target in anything that's here, you're not as likely to begin moving forward. Now, strategic plans, and anyone who has a strategic plan would tell you this, they're not cast in stone. They are meant to be living documents. They are reviewed annually for the appropriateness, not as much the appropriateness of the vision as the appropriateness of the strategy, which is how you achieve the vision, but certainly the vision can be looked at again. Mission rarely is changed. Once you have a mission, it typically doesn't change over time. But there's an annual review process, and I think if it is communicated to the community properly, these are targets. These are not guarantees that, you know, if you've wanted a community center for years and years and years, show up at this particular part of town on January 12th of 2022, and we're going to have a building there for you. I don't think you sell the plan that way. You sell the target as a means to get the community moving. And on that particular example, you know, the mayor was correct. There's already some movement, you know, on that. So, you know, the city's out of the gate.
So it's a goal rather than a guarantee, is what you're saying?
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. It's, you know, to relate it to something personal, you know, we might all say, you know, "My goal is to retire at such and such an age."
Right.
But then things happen. The recession of 2008 occurs, or, you know, somebody loses their job, or any number of things occur that, well, gee, all of a sudden, maybe I'm not going to retire at that age after all. I've got a...
Well, maybe what we can say related to the community center, we all understand that, I think what we can say with the community center is that in five years, that a community center will be a reality. We don't know what stage we'll be in, but at least we'll make enough progress so that we know that it's really something that we believe is going to happen. So I think that's an achievable goal, don't you think?
Yes, that's what I said. One thing, Bob, I wonder if you could write your statements up there on the thing so we can have them in front of us.
My penmanship?
So I can remember what you said.
I'll just fold this one over. Your penmanship may be better than mine, however you... Apologies to members of the audience, by the way. Prior to the meeting, we were experimenting with different places to put this where everybody could see it, and unfortunately, there was no good place.
If we had technology in here, we wouldn't need a pen and paper.
Have a smart board you write on.
We could just use our fingers up here, and it would all... Everyone would be able to see it.
A number of things we're doing, yes.
The schools are better off than we are. This is difficult to read.
Okay. The five: infrastructure, maintain low crime rate, community center is a reality, improve aesthetics, and fiscal stability.
Okay.
I would suggest that at least on this item, the improved aesthetics, we need to flush out something a little more specific there. Because a vision statement, you should be able to read that and visualize what that vision is going to look like at the end of the plan, which in our case is five years. And not only should you be able to visualize that, but all five of you and everyone in the audience visualizes the same thing. So we don't get to 2022.
So we don't get to 2022, and one person says, well, I thought it was going to look this way. Someone else says, I thought it was going to look this way. And that's why vision statements often deal in specifics such as, there will be a community center. You know, specify a location or what programs are there necessarily. But unless a portion of that community center might be a senior center, you might say that in a vision. But you put enough specifics in there so that everyone who reads it goes, oh, okay, I understand what we're talking about, and I understand what we're shooting for. Yeah, if it's not built and operational by a certain date, that will become clear over the course of the five-year planning horizon. And in one of the annual reviews, which, by the way, can typically be done in one meeting, they're done more quickly than the initial process is. But in one of the annual reviews, it will become clear, oh, that date we've got down to the community center is now no longer a good date because it's taking us longer to raise funds, or it's, we had some other issue come up that is causing us to need more time. So now, on these five items, we do have some components that are listed here. For example, under infrastructure, there's an infrastructure management plan. And actually, when we get to the strategies, one of the recommendations I had for the council was that there be essentially one strategy for each priority. And the strategy for that simply was to develop and implement an infrastructure management plan. Because if you do that, some of the other things that are mentioned here, in fact, all of the other things that are mentioned here can be elements in that plan. The overall strategy is we've got to have the plan, and so-
Jim, under aesthetics, we had one here that beauty and heritage of the community is a priority. Wouldn't that be, would that be a more appropriate one?
Well, that's what I'm reading to be aesthetics. Now, were you looking at a different priority when you were?
No, no, you just, I thought you said you had to kind of flesh that one out as to what it meant.
Well, what I'm trying to understand here, I guess, is, do we want to preserve a longer individual statement for each of the five priorities? That might be a couple of sentences for each priority that will weave some of these things together? Or are we just simply talking about these concepts? If we're talking about concepts, because even with infrastructure, we've got to flesh that out a little bit more. Because, well, okay, what do we mean by that? What are we going to do about that? How is the infrastructure going to be different in five years than it is today according to our vision? So-
But these are tactics that gets you to your vision. Your vision should be something that's overarching. And what, if you closed your eyes, five years from now, what does this city look like to you? Those things right there are supporting tactics that get you to that point. Because you've got to do things with the infrastructure, you've got to do things with this, you've got to do things with that. But that's not a, those aren't visions. Those are tactics that get you to the vision.
Well, yeah, as they're stated there, yeah, I agree entirely. And the reason I took the approach that I did in rewriting the original vision was precisely the point that you just made, is that we needed to flesh those themes out a little bit more. Okay, law enforcement is a priority. What does that really mean in the future of the city relative to a vision? And so actually, what we wound up with here was eight little mini visions.
I would offer that you have more than, you have eight or nine vision statements. The vision statement, or the vision like Councilman Pitch just mentioned, is that the city of Villa Park is one of the most desirable residential communities in California, enjoying a quality life rarely duplicated elsewhere. The city remains focused on these priorities or strategies to get to the hidden jewel. You've said it right there, that five priorities. You've said, our vision is one of the best communities we're going to have, and here's what we're going to focus on to get there. Now, the next step is measures, but that's not part of your vision statement.
No.
So I think for, it's simple is better. I mean, I will say that my vision statement from my last department was a three, it was three words, connecting people with resources, CPR. I'm not kidding. You could talk to all my department, and they would say, what's community resources about, connecting people with resources? It is, resonates. It's on a T-shirt. I mean, it fits. This doesn't, this would, you know, doesn't fit on a billboard. So I think what we need to do, I would think, and offer, that we really have that there. You have got the gist of a vision statement, and you're moving into strategies and saying, these are priorities to make that. There you're done. You're done with your vision. Now you go to measure how you're going to show that. And that's what's reportable, is your measures. And then you report those to the people, like, here's what we've done. Here's our measures. Here's what we're trying to obtain. But I think for purposes of a vision statement, less is better.
I concur.
Steve has presented us with a mission statement. Does everyone agree with it?
With a vision statement, not a-
How about keep it like it is, only better?
No, Jim did it. I'm just taking his wording and taking it from, Mr. Coleman, I don't mean to call you Jim. I'm sorry. Taking liberties.
Jim's my name.
But I would just say that it's in here. And you really aren't, I mean, just think, when he says, well, when somebody's going to read it, no one's going to read unless the really diligent people want to read maybe the eight or nine or whatever. But you read that one thing that resonates, yeah, I agree with that vision. I think that's what I would consider my priorities and, you know.
It's culture.
It's, yeah.
It's culture. It's how you define culture.
So I tend to have been experienced in that side of things. And, you know, the longer, and, you know, you get lost sometimes. We want to say too much, and we get caught. So I would just caution that less is better again. So, thank you.
And so far as the mission statement, or, excuse me, the vision statement, I concur with that. I think that's where we need to go. And I think we need to move forward with that. And then we can have the dialogue about the metrics as to how we're measuring that.
Okay, does anyone have an objection to that as a vision statement? No objection, we'll go ahead.
So what is the vision statement now?
It's a-
Do you want to, we should probably state it for a motion and-
Yes.
Yes, please.
Probably state it in a motion.
And do whatever, if I can help me lose this. Okay, my suggestion is we state it, clarify the language you want in it, vote on it, report it for posterity's sake. It's in the word, you know, it's in there, so.
Could you, for Bob, could you give the language again?
This is the language you're referencing.
Yeah, that's what he's referencing here. Starting here with, this is really the vision. This is what the, and he says it's going to be five priorities, which I believe are priorities that you listed.
Yeah, that-
But this would be the vision statement here, and focusing on these five priorities. Isn't that it?
That's what I'd offer and suggest it. You flesh that out as part of your metrics and your strategies to get there.
Okay, but we're, let's forget about metrics for right now because there's another step. Those metrics are not based on that opening paragraph. There's nothing there you can measure.
Right, correct.
So that's why there's core strategies. And the core strategies may be the answer to what these sub-statements wind up being down below the vision. Because I'm assuming, if I understand what's coming up as a motion correctly, the section here that says the city remains focused on five priorities that continue to sustain, that's staying in this statement, correct?
Yeah, so it would be the boulded area. As I, the boulded area was on June 30th, 2022, residents, et cetera, that statement. I don't know, want to reread it and take up time. But in essence, the priorities being infrastructure, low crime rate, however you want to word those in there. But then I believe, unless I'm mistaken, Jim, that you were talking about doing core strategies as a separate down, section down the road. So from a pure vision statement, this would be it? That's what I think we were talking about.
Correct.
What you read earlier is what the vision statement should be.
Which, which is, I just, if that makes sense.
Just a suggestion, following on your suggestion to keep it simple, I knocked out a few words out of the vision statement.
No, no, no. Let's go with the-
No, no, no. Let me finish, Bill. So it says, on June 30th, 2022, the city of Villa Park is a most desirable residential community with a quality of life rarely duplicated, and the city remains focused on priorities that sustain its reputation as the hidden jewel. Says the same thing.
Just, I think it's just even shorter. We're listing those five priorities or whatever you want to, right there.
So are we not a desirable residential community until June 2022? When I read that, it tells me that we're not, and that we have to work to get to that. And that's how I read that, because of that, because of that date. I actually think this is how we are, and we will continue to be. But we don't need to work to get to that point. We're there already, and we want to maintain it. And how are we going to maintain keeping that quality of life?
How about on June 30th, 2022, the city of Villa Park remains?
One of the most.
I'm not sure why we have to put the June 30th, 2022, but that's fine. It isn't, the date is not relative to me. I just want, we have a vision of how we are and what we're going to do to maintain it.
Steve, can you bring us full circle on this and include our subheadings or?
Right, so it would be June 30th, 2022, whatever. I don't know, I didn't rewrite the-
I can give you mine.
But basically, consideration.
Do you have a projector that, did you bring a projector that you could write on that we can see it up here now?
No, we don't have a, we don't have a projector that will. I suppose we can do that if you want us to try.
I just want to make sure that, it's hard to-
Yeah, no, I understand.
You guys are putting a bunch of, it's difficult to find.
Okay, bring, well, we'll deal with one step at a time so we can go back. Okay, on June 30th, 2022, the city of Villa Park remains one of the most desirable residential communities with a quality of life rarely duplicated, and the city remains on the, on five priorities that continue to sustain its reputation as the hidden jewel. Those priorities being infrastructure, maintaining low crime rate, community center, the reality of a community center, improve aesthetics and fiscal stability. That would be-
I like it.
-incentively the vision statement. You can drop out those five priorities or however you want to do it. I mean, I'm just-
Well, I'll move that we prove that as a vision statement.
I'll second that.
Moving second.
I'd like to, I'd like to hear it, like, complete, though. It wasn't, it's not, it's not complete. I mean, I don't think we can make a motion and approve something if we don't see every word, like, he missed a few words. The words have to be complete for us to be able to approve them. Otherwise, you're not approving the-
Steve, can you, on your computer, can you bring something up where you can type it and put it up on the screen here?
Or you have to bring it back? Because I don't know how we can approve it if we don't see all the words, too.
I agree with Councilwoman Fasenelli. And the reason I do is because infrastructure by itself is not a priority.
Well, let me, let me-
What are you going to do with infrastructure that makes it a priority?
Well, let me, let me offer this. You're not, I mean, I think what we're doing here tonight is a buildup. You're not approving the strategic plan at this point. You're at December 19th. I think the point is that's when it is formal approval. At that point, you can adopt it or whatever. I mean, I can pull it up here, but-
That was my understanding, is that-
Yeah, so tonight is a working session, as I understood it to be, with still potentially public input next week.
I concur.
Well, public input, yes. But, and while there wasn't to be final approval tonight, certainly, you were to give me some specific direction as to how to draft, a draft plan that could then be presented to the community a week from tonight.
Well, we gave that, we gave you the draft language, but we don't need to approve it to be final because we need to see it, we need to see it in a document.
Well, that's on the 19th.
Or which would be the 19th.
The 19th of December. Or whenever the council needs appropriate, that's when they would approve.
Should I make a, should I offer a suggestion? Or could I offer a suggestion that perhaps, Mayor, with your indulgence, we take a five-minute recess? That gives Steve Franks the opportunity to put this down in either a PowerPoint, if that's possible in such a short period of time, or on just a Word document so that we can hear it. And I think the suggestion is a good one that Councilwoman Fasenelli mentioned, just so that it flows without hesitation so we all understand what we're going to be adopting as far as a vision statement. From there, then we can move on to more specifics.
Can you do that, Steve?
Five minute, would that work for you, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. Take a five-minute break, give them that opportunity.
Steve was working on this in, in PowerPoint and it wasn't cooperating relative to bullets. But if you can imagine a colon after hidden jewel and then the five priorities appearing in bulleted fashion underneath that, that bolded statement. I'm sorry?
Looks great.
Well, it highlights the five items a little bit more with bullets, but it doesn't have to have bullets.
It looks great either way. It gets the, the message out there pretty clear.
Okay, next.
Well, I had, I'd made a motion to, to approve this and I guess you wanted to make sure we understood what we were approving.
I'll second that.
So we can go ahead and vote on this if this is going to be our mission statement.
Grammatically, it says maintaining low crime rate, infrastructure, maintaining the beauty and aesthetics of the community, creating community and maintain, there's nothing in front of infrastructure. So grammatically, it's incorrect.
How about maintaining low crime rate and.
Sorry.
Infrastructure?
No, I'm, I'm with you, I'm with you.
Improving?
And the maintaining being the word three times makes it quite.
How about improving?
Improving infrastructure.
Improving.
Can I suggest that we just, in our vision, we take out everything past jewel?
I agree.
Because your vision is to create a city that remains, I mean, I, I, hidden jewel. One of the most desirable residential communities with a quality of life rarely duplicated. That's your vision.
You could even take the five out, focused on priorities that sustain its reputation.
You have to take the five out if you're going to take the rest out.
Because it.
Otherwise, people are going to be looking for, what are the five?
On the statements.
They're not there.
Take the fi, take the five out and then after the hidden jewel, you're done.
Take away from the five priorities later on in the document, all right? Because those are the strategies that get you to this vision.
So you're saying stop it at the end of the first sentence?
Yeah, but take, yeah, but take out the five priorities.
Yeah, well, that's, that's.
Well, not at the end of the first sentence, the, the end of the second.
Right.
You take out the word five.
Right. Focused on priorities that sustain its reputation.
Oh, oh, you said take out five.
Yeah, as a hidden jewel.
Oh, and, and leave it, leave it as that?
And that's it? It's a statement.
That's your vision.
I have something counter to, if I may.
Okay.
How would this sound? After the hidden jewel, maintaining our low crime rate, improving infrastructure, enhancing the beauty and aesthetics of the community, creating a community center, and continuing to focus on our historic fiscal stability. That removes two of the maintainings and I think focuses on aspects regardless of where you may live, who you may vote for, I think on agreeable goals that we all support and that our community as a whole supports.
You'd need to remove the, the word improving because you're putting something in there that's a continuing, it's a working. You need to keep it focused, like it's done.
Improved?
It's not even improved. We are, we have, we are, this is what we are.
Okay.
This is what we are, based on our priorities, this is what we are.
What would you, what would you, instead of the word improving in front of infrastructure, what would you offer instead, if I may ask?
I don't, I don't have anything to offer because I think it, I like that it stops at hidden jewel and it says priorities and then you can list your priorities and people know what they are. Because I like the statement just being the statement.
Okay.
And if you want to know what those priorities are, then that's further, but the statement itself says this is who we are, we have a great quality of life and we are focused on our priorities, who we are because of that. The rest of it, I think, just kind of more, it describes it, I understand that, but that's what the underlying, underlying hackup is for that. I, I just like to state who we are.
Jim, I had a question. If we stop there at hidden jewel, couldn't these parties here be kind of like strategies about how we're going to achieve?
Councilman Pitts mentioned that two minutes ago.
Yeah, I want to achieve that.
Correct.
When we were in, in the room drafting this, that's what I was telling the city manager is these, these five essentially become the core strategies.
You're right.
And your key success measures are going to be built based on those five.
Those, those, those five strategies.
Yeah, I like keeping it simple. I like your suggestion.
But, but the five has to come out, otherwise people are going to be looking for them as a part of this statement.
We've, we've got that. So just to, I think I, we can tighten up a little more, just say that on June 30th, 2022, the city of Villa Park remains one of the most desirable residential communities with a quality of life rarely duplicated, focused on the priorities that sustain its reputation as the hidden jewel, period.
He just took out three words.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, but that's.
Just took out three words, just.
Yeah.
So now it's just one sentence.
Works for me, so long as we incorporate those others.
Yeah, I think you just need to fix it grammatically. That's, that's the issue. You can't put focus on, behind duplicated. Yeah.
Comma focused.
So rarely duplicated. Comma focused on. There you go.
So is everyone satisfied with that?
Can we reread one more time?
Yes. One more time, so we can.
On June 30th. On June 30th, 2022, the city of Villa Park remains one of the most desirable residential communities with a quality of life rarely duplicated, focused on priorities that sustain its reputation as the hidden jewel.
That says it all.
Sustain or sustains? Sustain or sustains?
Priorities sustain, it's priority would sustains. So it'd be, it'd be a singular.
Yes, plural.
I think that's, my English training held.
As you can see, I want to make sure that we are not correct it.
Yeah.
Priorities sustain, it wouldn't be the double S.
Very important.
Let's check the grammar.
We'll run the grammar on it, but I think that's, I think that's how my.
I concur.
English grammar rules. My mom would be proud. Are we, are we there?
Yes, are we there?
Yeah.
Any objections to this?
No.
Okay, so we have a motion?
You, you want to do a formal motion?
I would like to do that just for the record.
So I'll move that we approve this.
Well, I thought we were going to approve everything on the 19th. Suppose you get input from the community that changes this.
Yeah, because otherwise, why are we, why are we going to the community? Why are we approving it?
I thought this was preliminary. We can come, we're going to come back and approve the final one and.
But why, yeah, why are we approving it?
The, the reason we're approving this tonight is because the rest of the plan is built on this. Now, on the seventh, if there are residents who contribute some ideas that you want to incorporate, we can change at that time, but what we're going to be looking at is a draft document and, and we can't, we can't get to that without preliminary approval, which is actually what we had of, of the.
So the mayor's motion is to approve this as a draft.
So that, what that preliminary approval does is it gives us a framework on which to do the strategies and the key success measures tonight.
So the, the mayor's motion is to prove this as a draft.
Again, then that's okay, but so will the strategies get completely rewritten and the measures and.
Couldn't the motion be that this is tentatively or conceptually approved?
Yes.
With final approval on December 19th part of the plan, if that has to, you know?
I thought that's what I said.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's the motion.
Before you vote, can I ask Councilwoman Fasenelli, are you comfortable with the words duplicated, comma, focused next to each other? You indicated earlier that you're not and I would join you in not.
I'm not, I'm not, I don't.
Duplicated, comma.
Yeah, it's duplicated, comma, focused. I don't think it, it, it doesn't work.
Yeah, with or without the comma, it doesn't work.
The two words next to each other do not go together. The most desirable residential community with a quality of life rarely duplicated, focused on priorities that sustain. But you know what? Guess what? It's a draft. Come up with a better word on, on the, on the ninth. I mean, move on. Come up with a better word.
And?
To me, to me, this, this exercise that has taken this long for this, to me, is, is absolutely. To me, this, this exercise that has taken this long for this, to me, is absolutely ridiculous anyway, because nobody cares about it. So, move on.
Can, can we just substitute the comma with an and? And then grammatically, intuitively, it absolutely does make sense?
And focused on priorities.
And.
Do it, and if it doesn't, if word doesn't tell you it's grammatically correct, we can change it.
It's going to be grammatically correct either way.
How's that?
Either way.
I know.
I think.
I did do it.
Who cares?
I give credit for Harvard, to Harvard over here.
Mister.
It's fine.
I like it without the comma because then you don't have a dependent clause at the end, right?
Yes.
Very good.
I'm going to throw on the language. Well, I just gotta, gotta earn my money. So we can add and.
Okay.
So, are we?
Can, can we move on? We have taken a lot of time.
Yes, thank you.
So that's the proposal, and that's what my motion is.
Second.
We're doing this as a preliminary approval, okay? So can we vote on it?
I'm fine if you want to vote.
Voting on it?
So, vote.
It's got to flash first, and there we go.
You got to vote.
I got to vote?
Yes.
On a preliminary.
Preliminary, right.
Passes on a 5-0 vote.
Okay. Now, what's next, Jim?
Initially, key success measures was agenda item two. With council's indulgence, I'd like to flip that to the end.
Okay.
Make it number four. Then that would mean number three. The SWOT analysis would move up to number two. And I'm frankly wondering at this juncture if that's even an important exercise for tonight.
I think the more important exercise is we develop core strategies and performance measures.
I would concur. That's, that's why I'm throwing that out. Normally, this is, this is a critical exercise, but the, the way we're kind of rearranging the process here, I, I think we could save the council a little bit of time tonight if we did not deal with this, but if a majority of the members would like to, we'll do it, and I would probably do it next, if that is your pleasure.
So you're talking about the SWOT analysis?
The SWOT analysis, correct.
Anyone would like to do the SWOT analysis? I don't hear any pretty clamor for it, so let's move on then.
Okay.
So that will be deleted for this evening, just for record, right?
Yes. Item, item number three is deleted. Item number two becomes item number three, and item number four becomes item number two.
So item number three is deleted. So we're on number, number four. Okay. It's harder than whack-a-mole.
Now, in, in your materials, under item number four, you had one attachment with an addition, which is under your supplemental agenda materials, and that's core strategies submitted by council members. And what I was working with at the time I dealt with core strategies was utilizing the eight priorities as outcomes in the agenda upon which we would build the core strategies. What I'm proposing to do tonight is just to replace what would have become the bullets that we referred to on occasion during the discussion we just finished, and define the core strategies as those five priorities.
Aren't the core strategies, aren't the core strategies, aren't the core strategies a thing that you put in place because of the SWOT analysis that you've done to, to address the weaknesses and enhance the strengths?
Not exactly. The, the SWOT analysis definitely impacts the strategies rather than the vision.
Right.
Strategies are a pathway to achieve what is in the vision.
Right.
In this particular case, since we've kind of removed those priorities out of the vision, the strategies essentially become the defining, the defining components of the vision, if you will, upon which we will determine the key success measures. Where the SWOT analysis typically comes in in this process is because strategies are dependent on what's going on in the internal and the external environment. You look at your key strengths, key weaknesses, key opportunities, and key threats or challenges, and essentially use those as a filter for whether you have strategies that are in fact going to work. So it's important, and I, I don't mean to imply that it's not important here, but I'm sensing from the council a desire to, to cut to those strategies because they now have become even more important, given what we have as a vision.
It's used to a different planning process. That's okay.
Oh, I, I'm, trust me, I'm used to a different planning process as well.
So, so just for clarification, what you're suggesting is those five priorities are your strategies?
Not, not in those words. No, but, but yes.
Refined, those are your core strategies, and you temper, that, those are what's going to get you to the vision that you just.
How did you get to those? How did you get to those?
Well, no, that's.
What drove you to those? Not just the vision, it's other things. What drove you to, to?
That's your SWOT, that's, I would agree with you. That's an assessment of your SWOT analysis. It says those are the things you need to work on to get to your vision. I, I would tend to say the same.
Well, the SWOT analysis doesn't drive you to the, the strategies. The SWOT analysis is a filter for the strategies. Where the strategies come from is their pathways to achieving the vision. And so the way, the way that we've written the vision statement tonight, these five or another five that the council may select become the pathways to achieving what we have, have said in this statement. And then the key success measures built off of these determine whether we're making any progress or not to achieve that vision over the course of five years. You and I are on exactly the same page as to how the process is supposed to work.
It's okay. Press on. No offense, I don't want to be here late, as I was the other night. I miss the football game.
So as I hear your proposal, that these five be the core strategies for achieving the vision.
Well, we should probably go back to whether we're going to deal with the SWOT analysis first. I, I'm now sensing that there's some appetite to, to do that.
You want to? Y'all, go ahead.
All right, okay. So doesn't want to do that. You want to forge ahead?
Now, we still need strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats to act as a filter for the strategies. But I guess what, what I'm thinking is, let's go to the strategies first, and then develop the filter if you want to take the time to do that.
Okay. So am I to assume that to get to those, that we did a survey of council and residents in Villa Park to understand what these priorities should be to achieve that goal?
Yes.
Okay.
However, I want to say something about the, the survey of the residents of Villa Park. That was intended to flesh out some strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats that could become part of a document which was sent to you as a summary of bullets that was provided to the council, not as the be all, end all list of all the strengths, all the weaknesses, all the opportunities, all the threats that could possibly exist out there relative to Villa Park. What that list was intended to be was a resource among other resources. For example, the testimony that we received at the community forum on August 30th, which you all got a copy of some time back, had some, some thoughts in it that could have been translated into some of those strengths and weaknesses, et cetera. When I sent out the pre-session work for this meeting, in the SWOT analysis portion of that pre-session work, again, as another resource, I said, here are lists of some categories, some topical categories, that if you want to kind of get your brain jump-started for what are the strengths, what are the weaknesses? Well, here are some categories to think about. So that was there. And then probably the most important resource of all is, you know, three of the five of you have been on the council for some period of time, during which you've dealt with a number of issues, you've talked to a number of people out in the community, all different types of people out there, you've been to events, you've witnessed things, you've heard things, you've experienced things, all of which wind up being a part of what you personally see as the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats.
But it ran us through our own filter.
Exactly. And so the, the purpose of that pre-work exercise was to have all five of you come up with four lists of 10 to 12 items that could then be melded together into just four lists of 10 to 12 items that the council collectively felt was, or were, the most significant strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats that would affect the strategies, which at the time, I decided what the order for the agenda was going to be. Those strategies essentially were the priorities. They weren't necessarily translated into strategy statements, which I did do in some of the materials that were in the addendum. And the reason they're an addendum to what was posted last week is I didn't get the last of the input from you literally until yesterday. So they, they had to be kind of last minute items. Once we remove those priorities from the vision, then that convoluted the process a little bit. So that's, that's why you're not seeing the process you're used to, why I'm not seeing the process I'm used to, and I hazard a guess.
No, the thing I had hoped most of all would be that we've got a nice cross-section of people through the survey in the city that, that gave input to help drive those priorities that we can implement and measure. And it didn't just come from the five here, that it came from a large group of people in Villa Park. And not through our filter, because I may filter it differently than what the person intended it to be. Whereas if they wrote it on a piece of paper, or if they spoke it, it's their filter, not mine. That was my only thing.
That's a concern of mine also, and I have raised that before, that there was a very small amount of people that were interviewed, and those interviews were directed from council people. And the people, the list of the people that were provided are related. I mean, 20% of those people are on the LEAC committee. And they came from council people who are on the LEAC committee, which their input is very important. But it's a huge amount of percentage of the same people. And that, that concern, that does concern me. When I look at the age of the people that are.
Let me address your first point. I, I interviewed 40 people, and 20% of 40 is eight.
Well, I'm looking at the first, I'm looking at the first list with 24 people. Five of, five of them out of the 24 are on the LEAC.
So you actually interviewed 40, not 24?
Well.
I have, I have more.
No, I'm, I'm not disputing what your facts are. I'm just trying to get.
This has been provided to me from, from Mr. McCombs.
Okay.
This was a list, this was a list that was provided to me that, that the mayor provided for you. When I look at the people that are on here, I'm looking at the age of the people. These are not, these are not people that have just moved in. These are not new people. There's not a cross-section here. So that is, it's just a concern. There, that we don't have a valid, we don't have valid data of a cross-section of our, of our residents. And I just, and I did discuss that with you, so it's not something new. And the answers that we got from the people certainly show, they show that. It doesn't show what our current residents are and who's moving in, and that, that's a big concern for me as we move forward. That we got people interviewed that have lived here for a long period of time, but we did an interview the people who've moved in here in the last 10 years. And that's who we need to serve.
Or a month ago.
I mean, that's who we, we're here to look at the vision, to keep this place looking like it does with the same quality of life for the people who just bought their homes. And they were not taken into account here. So you know, moving forward, it, I think it's, I think it's really important to understand that there's going to be, this is skewed a little bit. It's not something new that, you know, you interviewed 40 people, but I don't count the four school principals. Those are not, that's not a valid concern. I looked at the questions that were asked, and those, that's not, their opinions, quite frankly, when they live in Anaheim Hills, doesn't matter, the quality of life. So we need to, we need to keep that in mind.
Would you say, and I think the point is, is good to bring up that she's making, would you say it's representative of the folks that vote, though? So the folks that actually kind of, for lack of a better word, get more involved in the civic process? And is that why it's skewed? Or why would you venture to say? Because there's no disputing what she's saying. If, you know, she, you providing the information to her, you're saying 40, she's saying 24, but clearly you providing the information to Councilwoman Fassinelli. Why would you venture to say that that's the case? Do you have any idea based upon your, your experience?
And, and let me correct, the sheet does have more than 24. I took the residents. I did not take Todd, I did not take Todd OCFA, and I didn't take you guys into account, so there are more on here.
Okay.
But with due respect, Todd, I don't, you know, you don't live here.
Let me ask you this. What do you, from a consultant's perspective, what do you consider a statistically valid survey, number-wise? We've got roughly 6,000 or more residents here. What would you consider statistically valid?
I'd have to calculate it depending on confidence level, the way statisticians do. But I, let, let me say this. I never set out to conduct a statistically valid survey. What I set out to do, and I think at least in several of the, of the points that are here, it validates my approach. My instruction to the, the city manager before I met with him at the Plan to Plan meeting way back in May was, can you identify for me some of the people who are in roles in the community where they're either in leadership roles, or they're active in an organization, where they would be in the know about what the important issues are facing the community? And so the list that I got did have people who were on the law enforcement advisory committee, had people that were on the investment advisory committee, it had the president of the. had people that were on the Investment Advisory Committee, it had the president of the Rotary Club, it had some business owners, it had people from the Women's League on it. I also asked him for some of the vendors that provide city services. I talked to the fire chief, I talked to Lieutenant Puckett from the sheriff's office, I talked to Todd, people who, again.
Jim, I understand the direction you were given, that's okay. It's okay, I'm not trying to.
But let me at least get to the end. We may or may not, in a statistically valid survey, and by the way, the discussions I had with people lasted from one hour to as long as four, which is why I didn't stand at Ralph's with a clipboard on Saturday asking people questions, because the list of questions that I was asking would have been way more time than anyone, including any of you, would have spent with me, you know, out in front of Ralph's. But by talking to the people I talked to, these were, among the issues that surfaced, now there were certainly others that are not on here, traffic for one, but, you know, crime rate, important, and I have to believe that whether you're brand-new to the community or have lived here 40 years, or a male, or female, or 25, or 85, that's important to you.
Yes.
I have to believe that infrastructure, had I done a statistically valid survey, might not have been mentioned by a majority of the people because they're not, I'm sorry, because.
They're not.
They're not thinking about it. Well, I won't say they're not concerned about it. I don't pretend to know who's concerned versus not concerned, but I know.
It's an expectation of the city, that the infrastructure works and that it supplies what they need to have a community just like this.
People such as yourselves, who are involved with this stuff on a day-to-day basis, are going to come up with this. Aesthetics, again, I'm not sure people.
For essence of time, listen, we just need to move on, because I'll tell you why.
Do you understand?
We both brought up, I want you to recognize that we're bringing up a valid concern because of the cross-section of people does not represent the cross-section that live in this city today. That's all. It's a concern.
We recognize that concern.
It's a concern.
We recognize it, okay.
And that we've not taken that into consideration as we've developed this plan going forward.
Yes. You know, I will tell you that if conducting a statistically valid survey had been part of the process, which is something, by the way, that I never do in any of my assignments, and this is the first time this issue has come up, but if that had been part of the bid, the bid would have been higher, because that's labor-intensive, it's a tremendous amount of data, and I'll tell you, from the 40 people I talked to, just the pages that I went through there and trying to find common themes and directions and whatnot, took a great amount of time. And I agree with you, if what we're after here is a statistically valid survey, we weren't there. All I was simply trying to do was get to people who had some level of activity in the community, and since I don't live here, and by the way, I think the city was wise to choose someone who didn't live here, whether it's me or another provider, because you've got to have that kind of disinterested third-party coordinating it, not coming in with views on any particular issue, you know, ahead of time. But in the end, the five of you are elected to set the strategic direction of the city, whether you have a strategic plan or not. And that's why I asked each and every one of you in the interview questions way back at the beginning of the summer, when you ran for the council, what was your vision for the city? Why did you run? Because everyone who runs for public office has a reason, and it's usually, you know, I'm concerned about schools, or I'm concerned about traffic, or I'm concerned about something.
Jim, can you interrupt just for one moment?
Okay.
You're, I just want to reiterate a couple of things. The sheet you gave me here has a total of 35 people on it, so there's probably five people on here that are not, that you didn't. Out of those, only 23 people, 23 people live in the city out of this. Out of these, there are only four people that were in the age bracket of 50. Okay? That's it. And we're looking at 53, 53 years old. We've got one, two, we have three people who are 53, because I happen to know which ones they are. And that's it. The difference is, is when I have a three-page document from Mary and Wayne Sizell that have lived here since the beginning, who are on the LEAC committee in some form or another, they're the homeowners watch people, and they're giving you a perspective of how life used to be here and what they wanted to see. And it's ugly. It's really ugly, and this is just one. The responses received from some of these people are so prejudicial. I'm embarrassed to show this to our people, to our residents. And I wouldn't have focused on this if had I seen people my age and everyone buying that. I'm not sure we can get to our vision, because although we're here to serve, you know, people that have lived here 42 years, 52 years, we're also here to serve people who have only lived here two years, that we want 42 years.
Agree more.
That's got to be our goal. And the information that was received by the residents, the majority of information that was received, because I did read everything you gave me, there's a common theme, younger and international families do not prioritize participation. International residents seek to revise our character of our residential construction. They have a lack of respect for persons and properties and values. There is so much here that I'm afraid of even going forward with this, because when I read, and I don't know whether or not all of you have had the opportunity to read all the data that he did collect in the interviews, and if you haven't, I suggest you do, because I'm not sure what's going to happen is the vision that we're going to come up with, well, I'm not going to come, is not going to be valid for our current city. You can't take these type of statements that they don't care for the children, they actually tell you they don't care for the schools, it's very, I don't want to read the whole thing here. And I'd like to make it part of the record, because they are valid concerns, but this is, this is not what we, how we can go forward. We can't go forward with 45 people who were quite negative about our schools and our traffic and our city. I don't know how we can go forward.
Well, I do know how we can go forward. You've expressed your concern, you don't think it was done the proper way, but that's the way it was done, and I think we just need to move forward, that's where we are now.
In the interviews that Jim conducted, correct me if I'm wrong, is just one of the inputs to this process. Ultimately, we had a workshop already, we're going to be having another workshop, there's all of our collective experience being out in the community and talking with other residents, and, you know, it'll be, you know, we can develop a, between the five of us, a reasonable vision for where the city's going and develop some strategies on how to get there.
I thought we'd already developed a vision, and we were going to move on to doing our core strategies. Could we do that?
Well, I appreciate that you allowing me the comments.
Yes.
I would like for the record to have this attached, because there's a lot of information on it, and it's from a resident who's lived here the longest, please have it attached accordingly.
Can we move on to core strategies? Because I don't want to be here all night.
No, no, thank you very much.
You've got a long drive.
Thank you.
I would just say that some of the comments that you've just heard, you won't find in the summary. I edited those out because they were not, frankly, mentioned by enough people in the survey to, or, I hate that word, because it wasn't intended to be a survey, they were personal interviews, and in the field of research, personal interviews and a survey are different things. But I would just leave the council with one question on this particular topic, and that is, as you sat down to think about what you feel are the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, did you reflect on sources other than, or in addition to, that summary? I would hope that you did, because that summary was never intended to be the one and only resource that you use. And I would hope, I've been in elective office myself, and I know, first of all, I understand your concerns, I'm not poo-pooing them at all, but during my years in public service, like you all, I attended a lot of events, I talked to a lot of people, I heard a lot of concerns over the course of time, and I heard them from a wide cross-section of people. So when I sat down to do this very process myself years ago, when I was on your side of the table, I reflected back on a number of different resources in coming up with a SWOT list. And this document was not statistically valid, it was never intended to be, it just simply was intended to call some ideas from people I was led to believe were leaders and were active people in the community. Those were the people I was seeking, because that's how you get a list like this.
Yeah, I think we've spent enough time on this.
Okay.
Can we move forward? Because I don't want to be here all night.
Okay.
Can we go to, I believe the next thing is core strategies.
Okay, core strategies is, was item number four.
Go ahead, keep going. Give us a minute more. He wants to get some water.
Core strategies are the pathways that lead to fulfilling or achieving the vision statement that we now have. And so that's what we're about. I had asked each of you to think about strategies that might help us move the conversation along a bit tonight. I did not hear from all of you, so consequently, the bullets that appear in the document titled "Core Strategies Submitted by Council Members" don't come from all five of you. And in many cases, what I did get here are actually key success measures or action steps. They weren't really strategies. So I looked at the collective material that was in each paragraph that starts with such and such is a priority. I looked at that material because it came from the vision statement that was adopted on September 19th, and with some specifics added when I went back to the authors of that statement, when asked to redraft it. And I tried to think of a singular strategy that would accomplish as much of what was in that paragraph as possible. So for quality of life, well, we, quality of life is not one of our five, so let's not deal with that. Public safety is, the crime rate, we had three items there that were submitted, a couple of those are actually key success measures. But I had fund law enforcement and public safety sufficiently to sustain the level of protection defined in the city's vision. And since we've essentially taken that paragraph out, we're no longer defining it in the city's vision, so this unfortunately is not going to be an adequate sentence unless we were to take some of the items from the "public safety is a priority" paragraph and move those down to the core strategy. So we actually had a pathway to getting there. The next one was infrastructure, and purely and simply, my view is that the, of the material that is in that "infrastructure priority" paragraph, it can all be summed up by developing and implementing an infrastructure management plan, because all those other things can become pieces of that plan. So the plan becomes the main strategy to accomplish that particular priority. Beauty and heritage of the community is the aesthetics item, and what I came up with there, this one was a little more difficult, because it kind of jumped around a little, I didn't see common themes like I did in a couple of the others, but I came up with collaborate with the community to define and implement ways to preserve and sustain the beauty and heritage of Villa Park. So you bring in people from the community to participate in the task force or committee or whatever you want to call it, to define and implement ways to accomplish this. So essentially, they develop, or they work with you to develop a plan to achieve that aesthetics.
The line you have here that the city provides financial support and appropriate variances and funds underground utility engineering reports, we don't, we don't fund personal, that line bothers me.
Okay.
The city does not fund personal.
Let me clarify, nothing you're reading in these paragraphs is necessarily happening today. These were intended to be visions.
But they're visions, but the city is not going to fund private.
And that detail was part of what.
So how did that get put in?
I'm about to tell you. That detail came from me going back to the authors of that vision statement, asking for some specifics about supporting underground utilities, okay? And what way are we going to support?
Well, this city is not going to fund private development.
Then we take that out.
Let me, Jim, I thought we had dropped this for what our other vision statement is. This doesn't even appear in the plan, does it? This doesn't appear in here anymore. We've eliminated this and come up with a new vision statement.
But he said this is core strategies.
But no, I didn't see him saying this is core strategies to do this, is that what you're saying, Jim?
Yes.
What I'm reading as core strategy for this particular infrastructure item.
Give it again.
Is simply develop and implement an infrastructure management plan. Now, whoever is on the committee, the task force, the council, whatever you want to call it, that develops this determines the content. Now, if there are things in this particular paragraph, Bill's correct, we've taken that out of the document, and so if, I mean, they can certainly look at this and take an item or two out of there to build into that infrastructure management plan.
What I'm saying is, I don't want anything in there that says that the city's going to fund private development.
Wait, wait. Jim, what was the strategy you set for this? This is on the beauty, heritage, and community, not infrastructure.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Now, say again what you said, the strategy for this one.
Okay, for beauty and heritage, yeah, I forgot we'd moved on from infrastructure. Collaborate with the community to define and implement ways to preserve and sustain the beauty and heritage of Villa Park. So in other words, you involve the community to say, this is what we'd like the community to look like, this is what we want to preserve, that's part of our heritage.
So we're taking out that paragraph?
So we've taken all of that out.
Well, essentially, all of the paragraphs.
We're taking all the paragraphs out.
Are coming out. All I'm suggesting is that.
No, he's not.
Yes, he is.
He's not.
I heard nothing, he said there was anything in this paragraph.
Tell me, okay, let's make it, let's do this easy. I'm looking at this document, tell me what, tell me what I should mark out, what is not.
The entire thing.
Well, I'll tell you what you should circle, that's easier. Do you want to go back to public safety and start at the beginning?
Because I have a full page, I have a full page, and I want to know what I'm supposed to be paying attention to.
Okay. Then let's go back to page one that has the heading, we can skip quality of life, because that's not one of the five.
Okay, hold on, I'm going to go quality, that whole. Okay, hold on, I'm going to go quality, that whole paragraph, how about the, how about the two bullet points?
Quality of life is not up here.
Okay, I'm asking you how much of this I need to.
Cross the whole section out.
Okay.
We cut immediately to public safety as a priority.
All right, is there anything?
There, what you circle is fund law enforcement and public safety sufficiently to sustain the level of protection defined in the city's vision. Now, when I wrote that.
That's the only thing, everything else won't be there.
Let me finish, please. When I wrote that, these priority paragraphs were still a part of the vision, so I didn't feel a necessity to put detail there because it was already in the vision. Now, what you heard me suggest when we first talked about this was that we probably should take something out of that "Public Safety is a Priority" paragraph and put it down here, even if it's lowest crime rate. We should take something, because right now it just says.
So I heard, I'm hearing you correctly, I'm not taking this all out, you want something else in here? Or that's what you're discussing, so it hasn't all been taken out yet?
I'm recommending that you put something else in there, because the strategy as it's now written, starting with fund law enforcement and public safety, no longer has the specifics in it that it was referring back to when we had the priority paragraphs as part of the vision statement. Does everyone understand what I just, where I was headed?
The answer is it's still there until we tell you what to take out.
All right, so, yeah, so that does need some additional meat, but that's up to you, it's not up to me. Infrastructure, the only thing you really need to circle there is develop and implement an infrastructure management plan.
Okay, everything else is gone.
And whoever is charged with that determines what's in it.
Okay, so we're going to take that out.
May want to reflect on some of what's there, may not.
But this isn't going, we're taking it out, as of right now.
Oh, yeah, you're not going to see it in print.
That's what I'm asking.
In plain, what you're going to see are the things I'm telling you to circle.
Okay, got it.
Then, Beauty and Heritage of the Community is up here as aesthetics. So I have collaborate with the community to define and implement ways to preserve and sustain the beauty and heritage of Villa Park. So we can cross everything else out, because whoever's involved in that collaboration will determine.
And that will not be in print, what I'm crossing out.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, if you're crossing it out, it's, what you're going to get is what I'm asking you to circle.
Got it.
Okay.
And that's what you're going to take to the public next week?
Yes. Traffic control, I would cross that whole section out, because it's not up here. Financial stability is up there. And what I wrote for that as a recommended strategy was define the factors that determine the state of the city's financial stability slash soundness. Came up with that, because when you use terms like financial soundness, financial stability, financial security, those mean different things to different people. And so if you determine what are the factors, or you define the factors that determine that stability, that puts it into a context that people can understand. And regularly communicate the status of those factors through a variety of channels that will reach virtually all Villa Park residents. And I wrote that in there, because one of the questions in the interview was, does the city manage its funds effectively? A bunch of people said yes, a bunch of people said no, and the other third of the people said, you know, I don't know, they might, I don't know, I don't have enough information. So that's why I put that communication piece in there, so people can at least have enough information and know, I think it is managed well, or I don't think so, and here's why. Because some of the people who didn't think so couldn't define why they thought that way. So that translated into a lack of information as well. Okay, Community Activities and Programs is actually up here as the community center as a reality. And back when that entire Community Activities and Programs was part of the budget, or part of the vision, this is what I came up with for a recommended strategy. Facilitate collaboration among Villa Park residents to assess community needs, identify the facilities and programs necessary to meet those needs, and define the processes and funding sources to support those facilities and programs. And then everything else would be crossed out. And the reason I was talking in general terms there and never mentioned the community center is because not everyone was in favor of it that I talked to. Not everyone was in favor of a community park that I talked to. Some people said, you know, kids will get attracted there, and, you know, there's, and whether that's true or false is beside the point, it's, people have perceptions, and not 100% of the people I talked to were on board really with any one thing that was in here. And obviously, somebody who's not a senior, probably not going to get that excited about a senior.
Well, you didn't speak to too many people who had children either, so that had a lot to do with it. It did.
Okay.
We talked about a family oriented.
Okay, but you all, you all do, on a continuing basis, you all do, and you process that information and make decisions based on it, or at least you should be.
So that's, I want to make sure, I go back to financial stability as a priority.
Okay.
What am I circling here, or are you keeping this?
What you're circling is the bold-faced italic that starts with define the factors.
Everything else goes away.
You can cross out everything else, and whoever defines those factors will perhaps draw from that, perhaps not.
Well, they're not going to draw for it, because it's not going to be in print.
Well, but it doesn't mean that knowledge goes away forever, it just means it's not in the.
Those words are not going to be in print.
Not in the strategic plan.
Jim, like we did with the vision statement, could you do all those strategies and put them on a paper for us, so we could look at them and understand what each one is?
Because we just went from five pages to.
I think what he's trying to tell all of us is the bold is the only thing that's going to remain.
Bold tells, yeah.
Right. And with one exception, which is the law enforcement one, because it doesn't really contain, you know, something specific to do, like the other ones do.
Well, it does, actually, the professional service responder program by 50%, that is something to do, and that's not something that's within our control, that's within the sheriff's department.
Well, but that's not what I asked you to circle on that particular one, I asked you to circle.
No, but you left that one.
Fund law enforcement and public safety sufficiently to sustain the level of protection defined in the city's vision, and then I suggested that for specifics on that one, since I know it's a concern of some of you, you may want to focus on what's written up there, and that's lowering the primary.
So let's be consistent and keep the bold, so we know what we're looking at.
Okay, which is what I've recommended through all of this. With the exception of the three items that didn't wind up up here, then in that case, you cross out the bold too, because that item is Donski.
What's the bold? Responsible and responsive.
Okay, so we've got those five.
Aaron Nelson?
Yes.
Do you want to see these bold items? Are we clear?
I wasn't understanding, I wasn't understanding he was leading the bold items. My understanding was, he was giving us a whole new proposed strategy for each one of them, that had nothing to do with what's on here. Except for one, he took the one of the strategies out of here on infrastructure, and used that particular strategy. But all the other stuff, it's my understanding, it's gone, and he's proposing other strategies.
But it's not, is what we're finding.
But that's what I was saying, I'd like for him to put that on paper, so we can all look at, and we can all be on the same page.
I actually happen to agree with it, I understand his confusion.
Right.
I really do, because I, I don't care if you take a photocopy and cut it and paste it. That would probably be easier than you typing it, I'm just being honest, and it would be right now so you could see it.
Shouldn't be a problem just to retype that, because you did that with this vision statement, helped us all to understand what the vision statement.
I will tell you this, I believe in my heart that with the exception of the law enforcement one, the others as-is are consistent with what's up here.
Yeah.
Even if you forget about all the stuff you just crossed out, forget about all that, and read, develop and implement an infrastructure management plan. Is that consistent?
We're agreed, we're agreed it's consistent.
We just, he wants to see it on one piece of paper.
We want to know what the strategies are, that you were recommending, so we can have a complete understanding.
If the city manager can supply me with scissors and some Scotch tape, I can get that to you in short order.
All right. Let's stretch.
Five minutes recess.
Yeah, we'll take a recess while he.
I'm going to go order towels. I'm going to go order food.
I'm gonna go order food.
I haven't touched it.
We eliminated all of the bullets that were under the vision. So those things went away, but the priorities didn't go away. And of those eight, these are the five...
Right.
That you have determined are the most significant to help accomplish... And this is an important thing to say. Not just the most important things that are going on in Villa Park, but the most significant strategies, the most significant priorities to accomplish that vision statement that we dealt with earlier tonight remains one of the most desirable. And, you know, the most important word in this whole paragraph, and it's important that everyone watching on TV hear this too. The most important word in this paragraph is the word "remains." Because as any governmental entity will tell you, as any business will tell you, as any nonprofit will tell you, you may love life as it is today, but five years from now, you gotta work really hard in the next five years just to stay where you are today. Because governmental entities are out after you with legislation and administrative law, and the economy's changing, and people's attitudes, opinions, and preferences are shifting, and on and on and on and on. And if you try to remain the way we are today without doing anything different and without having any vision, you're not gonna be where you are today five years from now.
So these are the...
It is not.
These are the things.
So that word "remains" is a critical word. But once we took the priorities out and just came up with this,
what is the word?
That essentially morphed the priorities into the strategy. So that's where we are. You have the sheet that the city manager has given you.
Where are you reading the word "remains"?
Right here.
I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you.
You put that one in there?
No, I couldn't find the piece of paper where he was reading it from.
Yeah, I had a hard time locating it myself.
That's all I wanna know where... That's all I was looking for.
Okay, so the reason I came with these recommendations was I wanted to give the council since I didn't really hear from most of you...
Who did you hear from?
About strategies.
Who did you hear from?
About strategies.
Well, you've said that a few times. You didn't hear from... I mean, I talked to you. So who did you hear from for what you keep referring to?
Uh, the mayor and Councilman Rossini.
Okay, and that's okay. Just wanted to make sure there was something else, obviously, you wanted. Because you've asked us for a lot of stuff, so...
Well...
You have.
And I understand that. But the thing is, if those things get finished, then our work shortens. Because I can essentially give you a combination, as I did with the strengths and weaknesses.
I just wanted... You said it a few times.
Oh, what everyone had to say. So when I didn't have a lot to work with on the strategies, I thought, I need to come to the council with something that they can see and say, "I like that, I don't like that, I kinda like that, let's change some words." But I guess my recommendation would be for what was Agenda Item 4, it has now moved up in the order. My recommendation would be to start with these, with the exception of the very first one, which I think needs to have some, something added to it so that we understand what level of protection we're talking about.
Why do you keep saying that? It is very clear to me that it doesn't need anything because we're saying we want to fund, and we're saying we wanna sustain. I don't see why we... I mean, it's very clear. There's no misunderstanding.
Let me tell you why I don't think that's true. Because it says to sustain the level of protection defined in the city's vision. Well, the city's vision now says, "Most desirable residential community, quality of life rarely duplicated, city is focused on priorities that sustain its reputation as the hidden jewel."
Okay, then we should change this.
Now, it's inherent in all of those things. Hidden jewel, desirable community, quality of life rarely duplicated. It's inherent in there...
Then change this.
That public safety and law enforcement may be a piece of that, but it's not...
Change this, just like you started this. We had to get to this to flow down to this. So we approve this, now we move to this, and we can adapt it accordingly. That's how you explained it to us. That's why we had to approve the vision first. So we've done that. We're on the right track. So there's some words here that have to be changed because we changed this. It's simple. So let's... That needs to be rewritten.
Or I think probably the first two-thirds of it are fine.
Okay, rewritten, yeah.
The back end just...
But take off the word "vision." I mean, that's what you need to do. So what would you suggest? We do that so that it goes with our mission statement, or vision statement that we just approved? Because we gave you that, we have these words. So now I'd like you to take your expertise and mix these words around to match the vision statement that we worked so hard to get. Because we told you what we wanted.
With those existing words, I can't do it.
Okay, well then let's change the words.
The reason I can't is because it says "to sustain the level of protection defined in the vision," and there's no level of protection defined.
Okay, change the words to match the vision statement. We know what we want. We want great law enforcement, we wanna fund it, and we wanna keep our crime rate low. So it's a matter of words. And if you can't... I'm not asking you to do it on the spot here, but maybe that's something that has to come back to us. Because I understand that. That's important.
Yeah, let me ask this question. Rather than define the vision, couldn't we set a level of the crime rate that we currently have? A level of protection that we currently have?
Well, the recommendation relative to the crime rate when we get to the key success measures was I looked at the crime rates of all the cities in Orange County, the most recent data that was available to us. And what was originally in the vision, which is what I based the key success measures on, was we wanted to be the safest city in Orange County. So I looked at the property crime rate and the violent crime rate in all the other cities. I found the lowest, and they weren't in the same city, but I found the lowest rates. And then in the measure says we are below those rates for property crime and violent crime. You know, that can work here, but not as a strategy. It's the measure of the result that occurs.
I'm just saying, just come up with, you know...
All right. I could say, "Fund law enforcement and public safety sufficiently to make Villa Park the safest city in Orange County," which was original language in that vision statement anyway. And then when we get to the key success measures...
To maintain our status of being the lowest crime rate city in Orange County.
I like that.
To maintain...
Do you wanna say "maintain" again?
Yes. You know what? It's not on this piece of paper, so we could say "maintain" again. That's the first time... Okay. Let's go with that and move on, and we can read it in a minute.
Do you guys agree with that?
It's a working start.
Yeah, that's more or less what I'm working on here.
We don't need to quantify it. We're saying we have the lowest crime rate. We're just gonna keep it that way by funding our law enforcement and making a statement.
Sufficient to keep it where we're at.
To keep it where it's at. To keep it the lowest in Orange County. So we're agreeing on that one. Can we move on to the...
I just would offer something here is...
Don't put "lowest" in Orange County?
Yeah, you wanna say that "fund law enforcement and public safety sufficiently to sustain the desired level of superior protection for the city."
And the current low crime rate?
The current low, but something, but just...
If we get one big crime rate...
That's it.
That's the problem.
Statistically, we have four or five crimes...
You're done.
In a row, and all of a sudden our stats are through the roof.
Yeah, that's true. It's a number game.
I know what the city manager said, taking the word "superior" out. Because what does that mean?
No, but whatever you used... They were just debating that.
Okay.
I'm just offering that we...
I agree. I agree. We have to...
What was it?
Okay, say it again, Steve.
Say it again.
"Fund law enforcement and public safety sufficiently to sustain..."
A low level.
Current low level of crime or low crime rate?
To sustain a low crime rate.
Yeah.
To sustain a low crime rate.
Sustain what?
To sustain a low crime rate.
I mean, you're...
And "low" is always relative.
If you... Yeah. If you... The thing I would say, the lowest in the county...
Correct.
If we have one crime...
Yeah, we're in trouble.
And La Palma has none, you know, has no crimes. You know, we get one. I mean, that's very, very low per capita, if you will. But we would still not be the lowest, so we wouldn't have satisfied. So I think we just need to say this is the low, a desired low level of, you know... So I think that would...
Yes.
That's what you're trying to get to.
We're setting an achievable goal as opposed to a goal that might come back to bite us and frankly, the residents.
Do we all agree with that?
Yeah.
All right, let's move on to number two.
Thoughts on the remainder of the page?
What's on the remainder of the page?
The other strategies. What I'm essentially asking for is your concurrence that these are okay? Or your thoughts that you wanna see some other language changed?
I'm fine with it. Anyone else have any issues with any of them?
Question to ask yourself...
Maybe Jim, you know what? Stop when you can count the votes.
Yeah, we all answered. We all answered. Every one of us said, "We're good."
Oh, okay, all right. So we all good with this?
We are good. We are good with these.
So are we voting on this item or not, just for clarity?
Yes.
Do you wanna vote on it?
Again, is this a tentative?
Yes, we're voting on a draft.
So let's say that this is a... It's all tentative until December 19th.
Right, I just wanted to clarify that for the record, that this is a tentative, that if there is additional weigh-in from the public, from others, that we will incorporate their ideas and thoughts.
Or frankly, additional weigh-in from one or more of you.
Of course, of course.
A motion to approve these.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
As amended on the first item.
Okay, so correct.
Correct.
Cash your vote, yeah, what's correct on the first.
Who's second?
Hold on, wait, Steve.
I made the motion.
Robbie's second.
Robbie's second.
All right, so...
So cash your vote.
Not until it starts flashing.
Not until it starts flashing.
Till it flashes.
It's not flashing.
Oh, okay. Till it starts flashing.
That passes by a vote of 5-0.
Okay. Now, what do we have? Success measures?
Uh, yes, we have success measures unless... You wanna go to the SWOT analysis and use it as a filter to filter this page?
I think we do success measures, because I don't know if we have time for anything else.
All right. Then what I suggest we do to save some time is for everyone to pull this sheet back out and have that in front of you. And we'll go down these one at a time and look at the key success measures that were in your packet under Agenda Item Number 2. It says, "The City of Villa Park Key Success Measures." And the reason I wanted you to pull up this sheet is because, again, these were written under the original vision with the original strategies. We're gonna go by these, and I will tell you where on this page...
So we're agreeing on that one. Can we move on to the...
I just would offer something here is...
Don't put "lowest" in Orange County?
Yeah, you wanna say that "fund law enforcement and public safety sufficiently to sustain the desired level of superior protection for the city."
And the current low crime rate?
The current low, but something, but just...
If we get one big crime rate...
That's it.
That's the problem.
Statistically, we have four or five crimes...
You're done.
In a row, and all of a sudden our stats are through the roof.
Yeah, that's true. It's a number game.
I know what the city manager said, taking the word "superior" out. Because what does that mean?
No, but whatever you used... They were just debating that.
Okay.
I'm just offering that we...
I agree. I agree. We have to...
What was it?
Okay, say it again, Steve.
Say it again.
"Fund law enforcement and public safety sufficiently to sustain..."
A low level.
Current low level of crime or low crime rate?
To sustain a low crime rate.
Yeah.
To sustain a low crime rate.
Sustain what?
To sustain a low crime rate.
I mean, you're...
And "low" is always relative.
If you... Yeah. If you... The thing I would say, the lowest in the county...
Correct.
If we have one crime...
Yeah, we're in trouble.
And La Palma has none, you know, has no crimes. You know, we get one. I mean, that's very, very low per capita, if you will. But we would still not be the lowest, so we wouldn't have satisfied. So I think we just need to say this is the low, a desired low level of, you know... So I think that would...
Yes.
That's what you're trying to get to.
We're setting an...
Keep the city safe.
Setting an achievable goal as opposed to a goal that might come back to bite us and frankly, the residents.
Do we all agree with that?
Yeah.
All right, let's move on to number two.
Thoughts on the remainder of the page?
What's on the remainder of the page?
The other strategies. What I'm essentially asking for is your concurrence that these are okay? Or your thoughts that you wanna see some other language changed?
I'm fine with it. Anyone else have any issues with any of them?
Question to ask yourself...
Maybe Jim, you know what? Stop when you can count the votes.
Yeah, we all answered. We all answered. Every one of us said, "We're good."
Oh, okay, all right. So we all good with this?
We are good. We are good with these.
So are we voting on this item or not, just for clarity?
Yes.
Do you wanna vote on it?
And again, is this a tentative?
Yes, we're voting on a draft.
So let's say that this is a...
It's all tentative until December 19th.
Right, I'm just wanting to clarify that for the record, that this is a tentative, that if there is additional weigh-in from the public, from others, that we will incorporate their ideas and thoughts.
Or frankly, additional weigh-in from one or more of you.
Of course, of course.
A motion to approve these.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
As amended on the first item.
Okay, so correct.
Correct.
Cash your vote, yeah, what's correct on the first.
Who's second?
Hold on, wait, Steve.
I made the motion.
Robbie's second.
Robbie's second.
All right, so...
So cash your vote.
Not until it starts flashing.
Not until it starts flashing.
Till it flashes.
It's not flashing.
Oh, okay.
That passes by a vote of 5-0.
Okay. Now, what do we have? Success measures?
Uh, yes, we have success measures unless... You wanna go to the SWOT analysis and use it as a filter to filter this page?
I think we do success measures, because I don't know if we have time for anything else.
All right. Then what I suggest we do to save some time is for everyone to pull this sheet back out and have that in front of you. And we'll go down these one at a time and look at the key success measures that were in your packet under Agenda Item Number 2. It says, "The City of Villa Park Key Success Measures." And the reason I wanted you to pull up this sheet is because, again, these were written under the original vision with the original strategies. We're gonna go by these, and I will tell you where on this page... Okay, here's what I'm looking for. Where... I will tell you where on this page you can find the measures that correspond to what's here. And then we'll look at those. Okay, this is a two-page document. On the first page, the second priority, "Ensuring Public Safety," is where you will find success measures that either were created based on coming back to the original authors of the vision to get some specifics or developed as recommendations by me. For example, the crime rates you see there. I explained to you earlier how I got those. But what we have here essentially is violent crime occurs at an annual rate lower than... And the city manager's just giving a good case for why those first two should be probably crossed out. So I would cross out those first two. One key success measure is potentially here is a minimum of one deputy sheriff is always on patrol in Villa Park. That's the present...
I hate to see that word, "one." People don't like hearing that we have "one." You know, but you don't say the word. You know, and I'd like to have it removed. We all know what we pay for.
How about if we say, "A deputy sheriff is always on patrol in Villa Park?"
Yeah, we have... Yeah.
Can I go back just a little?
Sure.
If you fund law enforcement and public safety to have a low crime rate, don't you need to measure the crime rate? So number one and number two actually have to be there. Otherwise, you can't measure what you just said was your strategic... You may not say the measure of...
You do, you do. It's just what I'm starting with is what we need to cross out that's here. And then we're gonna circle back and figure out...
Where did we cross out all of these?
How we're gonna measure this? Where did the... What is...
I think that's dangerous.
What's dangerous?
Being such a small city, I mean...
Putting out staffing?
Putting out staff like that. Okay, when I first got on council, we had, you know, there was a fatality. And one fatality, we're dust.
I would like it to state something along the lines of "a significant law enforcement presence on a 24-hour period of time in Villa Park." Significant law enforcement presence. 24 hours a day.
I like that.
As a measure?
How do you measure that?
Significant.
It's not a measure.
That depends who you talk to.
That definitely depends on who you talk to. I concur with the councilwoman 100%. Trust me, in my world, a significant means something.
Oh, I'm not saying it doesn't. What I'm saying is I might poll the five of you on what number is significant. And I'm probably not gonna get the same number from everybody. I'm gonna get different numbers.
Well, but you'll also get a different number for the word "violent crime." If you wanna get that technical, what's violent crime? We would actually have to go to what's the...
What standards do we hold a sheriff to?
What standards do we hold a sheriff to?
Depends on the call. And that's something that Lieutenant Puckett would have to address.
I mean, do we have a contract with them, right?
Correct.
And in the contract, do we have specifics about what's required?
No, we have required, but those relate to the number of staffing on duty.
Yeah, okay.
Not the number of crimes.
Not the number of crimes. Crime is an outcome based on the number of measures you take. That being, you know, communication, education of the community, patrol, et cetera, those kinds of things. So we contract for a service, and based on their recommendation to attain a low level, they're recommending a certain staffing level, for instance. So that's how we get to where we are with the sheriff. We aren't saying you gotta be at .46 or .4... We don't have a crime rate type of thing.
But what does the sheriff measure?
The sheriff measures, and that's what he reports each month. The property crime, property and...
I know, but do they have a scorecard that they keep that says Villa Park's at 3.6? I mean, not 3.6, but, you know, so many household crimes and so many...
They do. I mean, historical data, they do, yeah.
But does... When she... When Sandra... Sheriff Hudson sits down with Lieutenant Puckett on his quarterly performance review and looks at Villa Park, is he meeting his... How does he... What are the numbers that he's held accountable for?
As the councilwoman mentioned, it's likely that there's a historical average and probably a year-over-year average, and also as it compares to the remainder of Orange County. So for instance, if devastating legislation came out of Sacramento, much as it has recently, how are we doing versus other cities as it relates to that? Kind of gives some perspective.
So I think what the sheriff will say there is... Thing is, how do you year-over-year is probably their biggest indicator. Like, for instance, we dropped in the last couple of years, we dropped as a percentage where other cities were going up. So if you were to gauge success, that's a combination of measures, but that's what they would say.
At or below?
At or below.
At or below current crime rates?
Or we rose by 3%, where the rest of the county rose by 10% crime rates or something. You know, they look at it year-over-year by comparison to what others are looking at. And the sheriff typically looks at... Those are retro numbers, like two years before they get someone at the police departments. So they look at their own numbers for their contract cities, 13 cities.
But I think we're all high-fiving when we hear the word "we're flat or we're lower."
That's a desired goal, yes.
Correct.
That's a desired goal.
And I think that's something we can measure on a monthly basis. That's in his report.
Yeah. That's what I was sort of saying. I think we ought to have that as a success measure. How are we doing? And he provides that report. We collect that data. It's very easily, you know, ascertained.
Achieve no year-over-year increases? Or... But again, that can be skewed so quickly. How would you...
I think what we're looking at is at or below current levels would be a success measure.
Okay.
It's only a success... I mean, yes. And it can be adjusted based on whatever we think is required to adjust. If all of a sudden some state legislation comes out that drives crime rate up 10%, well, we have to adjust the success measure.
Well, I think Jim indicated that you do update your strategic plan. And if something were to happen like that, you could update it.
And it's a five-year...
But I think what we're trying to get to is a measure, and saying "at or below" is a measure.
Yeah.
Correct.
It is. What I wanna get more specific on, though, is the word "current." So do we set, like, the most recent level we have as kind of the index by which we measure the future?
I think we have last year's numbers as a fixed component at this point in time. We won't have this year's numbers for probably, you know, a good month, We won't have this year's numbers for probably, you know, a good month, month and a half, two months, depending on late-reported events.
At or below the prior year.
Correct.
I think year-over, at or below the prior year. I think that's, it's a rolling number.
Right.
You know, if you have-
Right. If you, if you want to get technical, if you want to get really technical and statistical, say 2016, 2017 on an average, or 2015 through 2017 on an average. But I think the last year certainly gives us a yardstick to measure things by.
Okay.
I think at or below the current year is good. Prior year is a good.
At or below the prior year.
Yes.
So that would be 2016 that we're taking for this year.
For this year, and then next year will be 2017, and it's a rolling number that we'd be, we'd be moving down the road, so.
And the goal is to always be lower.
Yeah.
Never to grow.
Never to grow.
If it changes, then your question's, well, what are we doing? That's, that's sort of, well, why are we up from last year?
Well, you may, you may have to go back to the sheriff and sit down and come up with different things that you do with them, or maybe you fund something differently to get them to help you achieve whatever that may be.
So that measure then has indicated a course of action that needs to be reviewed.
The reason why I might mention having a series of years, like, for instance, 2015, 2016, as opposed to strictly 2017, and then 2018 is measured off that, and 20, and then 2019 is measured off 2018, the statistical variances can be significant with just a small number of crimes. So if we use more than one year as a, as a yardstick, that might be a safer and frankly more truer approach of what the goal is in Villa Park. I mean, obviously, we don't want to go up year-over-year, but I think if you set the bar artificially low, you make it so difficult that it's rel, it's really, it's impossible in certain circumstances to achieve that.
Well, I would offer just, things can change radically. For instance, legalization of marijuana, and why she told you the other day, they're not even, that's not even considered, you know, they don't cite or whatever, whatever it won't be. But it won't be listed as a, as a, an arrest, or they won't make this, and it won't be recorded as a statistic. So that changed just year from year because of the adoption of laws.
Correct.
So I think you, you know, you could drop. So I think what you're, the measure is intended to give you cause to pause and look and evaluate what you're doing. And whether it's a three-year average, rolling average, or a one-year average, you're really looking back and saying, how are we doing this year compared to what we've done in the past? So I don't know if it really matters if you do a three-year rolling or whatever. I think you could do a three-year, or you could do a one-year, but you're, the goal is always to not get worse, if you will.
Correct.
Right? I think that's what we're trying to say. So you can probably say three-year rolling or one-year.
I think a three-year rolling average is a more, is a more accurate indicator and a fair standard to measure the performance of our law enforcement officials, our law enforcement component in this city, and a more accurate understanding of where things are truly at.
But I think like Councilman Pitts, if it ever goes up, then you've got-
Then that's a problem. Yeah, I mean, that's certainly a red flag.
What, what do we do? We have to do something different.
And I agree with Robbie on that. I think that's immediate red flag. Hey, okay, we got to check on something. What's going on here? We not writing enough citations? Are we not being proactive in our patrols for burglary, or, you know, what's going on?
Well, and understand, it's not always, a rise in crime is not always about something you did or didn't do.
Correct. It could be a socio, socioeconomic issue.
We've got big increases in San Dimas, and what our sheriff is telling us is it traces directly back to '47.
Exactly. And that's the legislation component that we don't have, unfortunately, we have limited ability to affect.
Okay.
Okay, well, that measure-
Are we going to do prior year or three-year rolling?
I would recommend, and I would appreciate support, on a three-year rolling average.
Does anyone have a problem with that?
And that measure's consistent with the language.
Okay.
We rewrote the strategy to have, so they're in sync.
Okay. We can go with that, then.
Okay, develop and implement an infrastructure management plan, and that actually is at the bottom of the first page of that key success measures document. And it actually is the first measure there. And the only way you really can measure that is a date by which that plan is, is developed and-
Well, why don't you use the date, June 2022? And this whole vision statement is by 2022 for it to be, to be done. I mean, you can't, by then, that's, that's the whole vision statement. In five years, we would have one.
Okay, but don't you want that?
I expect you to have one.
That plan to do something for you in that five-year?
But you say, you say approved and implemented. So implemented, if you just said approved, you wouldn't be taking action. But you're saying you've approved and taken action on it.
Yes.
Correct.
I think that's the key here, is you, I think getting to what you're saying is, you've approved and implemented, so you're taking action. That plan has actions in itself, and you're implementing those actions in and of themselves. So I would think that the councilman's point is well-
By June, you know, by June, it's finished. I don't know if you need to put the benchmarks in there as to whether you're doing it on a quarterly basis, or you're doing it in the first year or the second year. But at the end of five years, you'll have approved it, and you've implemented it. It's a vision, I mean, this is all about vision statements.
Does anyone have an issue with that?
No.
Just a suggestion. I'm just looking, I'm looking, I got to look, instead of zeroing down on it, I mean, this is a, this is a bold, wide document that we're looking at to, as far as a vision, by this particular date to have this stuff done.
Well, I don't hear any objection to that.
Okay.
Are we doing one measure, Jim, or?
Do we need any more than?
Unless the council's pleasure is to do more than one.
I mean, we, because we have an infrastructure committee, they're going to set their own timeline based on money, based on council, based on direction. Already, we've said, this is our goal in five years. And that's important. I think that's all you need to do at this point. We're not, we don't have a committee yet to tell them, you know, what we want them to do by a particular date. So there's no objection up here.
To answer the question that was asked, I would say on the, the infrastructure one, one measure's enough. I don't know what else you would say there, given, given the date that we just put. If you had a date that was sooner, you might add some of the things that, that may be in that plan, but since we don't at this point know what's going to be in that plan.
Undercommit and overdeliver.
Real quickly, under public safety, did we just have the one that we agreed to, or was the?
I believe it's just the one.
If there are other measures that you think will, will impact the, or strategy statement as we rewrote it, we can, we can have more than one. I think the one that we have cuts to the chase.
Okay, that's great.
All right, number three is collaborate with the community to define and implement ways to preserve and sustain. And that is on page two, under preserving the beauty and heritage of the community. And I looked at what was in the priority paragraph that initially was in the vision statement, and the only thing that seemed measurable to me was code enforcement. But I didn't give you a recommendation in this key success measure document because I wasn't sure how to effectively measure that. Now, you have in your addendum materials that were at your place today, a single sheet titled Code Compliance Performance Measures that came from one of the council members. Way too many measures here. I, and maybe the purpose here was to give us a menu to select perhaps one.
Code enforcement measurement can also be defined as moving towards homeowners association. So I think that this needs to be-
Very careful.
This is not going to go everywhere. That's not what this council has ever, we don't want to bring any attention to that. And although our residents are telling us that they do want us to use code enforcement, if it's necessary, we do not take a proactive approach. We are a complaint-based city. And when I see this code enforcement, the first thing I see is you're going to be driving by my house, and you're going to be doing code enforcement. So this needs to be thought out a little bit better, before we use those words. And that goes along the line with the residents' comments that I read that responded back to you, too.
Well, code enforcement is no longer consistent.
Jim, could I speak?
Oh, sure.
I agree with you that it should be, you know, reflect the complaints, and maybe what we could have as a measure is that the level of, the number of complaints, or the level of complaints received on an annual basis does not increase.
Okay, yeah, all right.
That's a difficult one because-
Well, we're responsive to-
We keep track of how many-
We do keep track of, we keep, we can keep track, but I think some, a control of that, I mean, because somebody doesn't water their lawn, is that something that the city directly controls, whether they're watering their lawn and their grass dies, and we knock on their door? So we don't control their, I mean, we can communicate, but again, if you're proactive, if you want me to be successful, I'm just going to put all my resources and add another couple of officers, and we'll put that number down. And I don't think that's what you want.
Not at all.
And one, one, we could have one party house that could turn that number topsy-turvy within one year. I mean, I appreciate the idea of trying to go that direction, but if we have another Chapman Frat House situation like we had, we could get a disproportionate number of calls, and then it artificially skews the number, and then we haven't really met a goal. And frankly, it's concentrated in one area. It's not an accurate measure of an overall issue across the city. And I do agree with both Mayor Protim Colicott and Councilwoman Fassinelli, and I believe the remainder of the council. We don't want to be a homeowners association. I moved from a homeowners association. I don't want that rule. I don't want that, that way of life. I don't think anybody doing this.
I assume, too, that preserve and sustain the beauty and heritage of Villa Park is not just about somebody's yard.
Yeah, I think what you could do is-
It's a much broader, it's a much broader scope. I mean, even paving the streets.
And one of the things I would suggest as a measure, and I hate, you know, you sometimes almost hate to go there, but I think this is truly one where you have a customer satisfactor, a resident satisfaction rating type of thing. And that's how you measure, are the, is the, are the residents happy with the preserve and retain the beauty and heritage of the city? I mean, I think if the residents aren't happy, and you could do, you know, there's a number of ways to survey that, but that's truly what you're looking at. The way it was worded, if you're trying to preserve the heritage and the beauty, then we have to find out what the residents believe.
Customer satisfaction.
I like that, yeah.
So a resident survey is actually, I think, the customer satisfaction rating or whatever that you say, you know, I mean, that's sort of.
I think that's a good call.
I don't know what the rating would actually be, but.
What I was going to point out earlier is that now that we essentially have changed that strategy, the code enforcement doesn't even really apply any longer to the, the strategy statement we've got here. Collaborate with the community to define and implement ways to preserve and sustain the beauty and heritage of Villa Park. So maybe that, that survey that the city manager's referencing can not only include a measurable number, but can also glean suggestions from residents that this committee or task force or group would, would do something with.
Otherwise, my head's going to explode.
I think you could construe a, a survey to probably hit a number of things. Are you satisfied? And I think we would, it would, you know, you could touch on subcap boards, code enforcement, blah, 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 blah.
Unless I'm mistaken, I believe the city of Lake Forest has something similar to that.
Some of the other cities have surveys that we could do.
Very much, I appreciate it.
I think that's what you would look for is.
So you're suggesting we do a survey and have a certain level of satisfaction?
Yeah, I think that would be, I mean, I think that's sort of clear for the residents. That's what the residents want, right? I think that's what you're aiming for.
How do you put that words? I'm sorry, it's a-
A beneficial rating?
Key success measure is based on a survey, based on an annual customer satisfac, a survey, an annual survey conducted of residents, customer, our resident satisfaction is at such and such a level.
Not annual.
Whatever.
Yeah, every couple of years, because-
Whatever you want to do.
We usually do it like every five years, because it's a constant job.
Whatever you want to do it as, but, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, so you finished my wording.
Or, okay.
Yeah, you know, I think you do a resident survey of all residents.
Yeah, that's what we did.
Those choosing to respond. I mean, you're not, you're not going to knock on somebody and say, you didn't respond. I don't want to do that, but, but if we go out and we-
We got an excellent rate when we did the lot, absolutely excellent.
I think that's a really valid tool of the measure, of the satisfaction. And I think you, it gets to your point way back that we were talking about, is satisfaction of the residents, which is what we're trying to reach here with our strategic plan in the first place. They're, they're going to be the measures of quality of life and et cetera. So I think-
So what's the metric?
Do you want to set a s-
Well, I think you can almost go back to your, if you really wanted to do it, you could say it's, it's-
A certain score on a, on a?
Well, you could say a score, or you can say it's improved from year-over-year. I mean, it's, you know what I'm saying, is it, or whatever, you know what I mean? You never want to deteriorate.
A certain percentage of residents indicate satisfaction or give-
Yeah, something, or I don't know what level of satisfaction.
Well, I think we got, we got 10% back, we got over 10% back, which was-
But what was the rating on the satisfaction rating would be?
You know, we had like 20, 50 questions on it. It was, it was good, but we didn't rate, we didn't rate it. We were, you know, we didn't rate it.
But I think that's important to get their feedback on the rating, because I think that's what you're looking for, is are the, are the residents happy with what we're doing for beautification and, and historic preservation, I guess, is that what it, heritage, heritage, I'm sorry. I'm not sure exactly, but-
I have a hard, I'm having a hard time to quant, to quantify that, because you know, you, when you, if you get a 10% return on a survey, it's, I mean, that's huge, that's awesome.
No, I-
That's great. But when you have 50 questions on there, and we don't really have anything to measure, you know, we didn't measure it, I mean, what are we looking at? It sounds terrible to say 40% of the people responded positively. That, to me, 40 sounds awful, but that's a really good rate, actually, because when you ask people to give their opinion, the majority of them like to gripe. I mean, that's, that, we all know that when it comes to surveys. So 40 is really good, but on paper, 40 looks bad. So that's why I'm questioning whether we want to put that number or not.
Of the surveys returned, an above-average rating as it relates to?
What's above average? I don't know what.
Well, I mean, that you could set, the staff could set that up, you know, four out of, on a scale of-
Favorable.
Favorable, you know, on a scale of one to five.
A favorable, favorable rate, I mean, that's, maybe that's the way to go.
More than 50% are favorable? I mean, more than 50% are favorable?
I think you start somewhere.
Leave it at 50%. That is the majority, and just leave it at that, the majority.
Start there, I think that's a good start.
50% or more are favorable.
Are favorable, and I think that's-
Okay, and that way, we strive to have the majority be in agreement with happiness. Okay. Mr. McCollum? We're, let, let's make a 50% or more, because that would be the majority of our residents are pleased.
Of responsive residents.
Yeah, of responded residents.
Because I, you know what, if you get a-
I would like the word majority, but if I have to give you a number, it's 50%.
If you get 10% responded, it's just, it's just like, you know.
50% or more do what?
Favorable rating.
Favor, favorable. Thank you, Elizabeth. Shout out.
Now, I hate to do this, but the measure we just came up with isn't a metric that matches the language of the strategy.
Okay, let's change the language, then.
Wait a minute, it says collaborate with the community. You're taking a stat, you're taking a-
I think it does. I think it does.
Nothing, nothing sets it down.
I think it actually does, because you're collaborating with the community to define and implement ways to preserve. So, so you're saying they want to know what, you ask them what their level of beauty is, and they, you're working with the community to establish that, and then you're asking them, did we do it? Are you satisfied?
And then you're measuring a subjective evaluation anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, but I think reaching out to them is what you're trying to do, and you're, then seeking their input, both on the front end, what they expect, and then how are we doing and what they expect. So I think you've-
Why don't we go with that? We're going to prove draft anyway, and if it comes back, and for some reason we don't like it, we'll tweak it and move on.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next, the next item is the city's financial stability, and that is underneath the traffic item on page two. 100% of existing and planned capital projects are fully funded before commencement. One council member who responded to me suggested the next key success measure be deleted, contingency fund for unfunded state and federal mandates.
I agree.
And that the next one, oh, they, they added one here, a level of unrestricted fund balance be established in the general fund for GAAP and budgetary purposes, funded by 12/31/2019. And then that last key success measure, good luck meeting that, zero increase in taxes, which not only isn't realistic, but it also isn't prudent for a city that's needing revenue as its expenses grow in the future.
I don't think we're going to impose any tax increases, though.
I think there are measures here that we haven't indicated. We just received-
What's that?
The CAFR rating, for instance, so that the accounting audit, you know, we, a clean bill accounting-wise or audit-wise, that's a very, very sound measure of what you're doing. There are other things that you can do to determine the soundness, and that you can determine at a really minor cost, determine your bond rating or what you would otherwise have.
Correct.
You don't have to do that, but you can go out and say, they assess your fiscal soundness, and that's your practices, et cetera. They'll look at your budget, they'll look at your, it's rating agencies, basically, come in and say, you're A, double A, triple A, whatever, you don't have to borrow a penny, but they give you a rating, and that's sort of a very valid tool that's very important in the financial world if you're assessing, businesses do it all the time, if you're buying some business, they look and say, what's your rating and how you look, right? And they have the audit, so if you stand up to a good audit and you're good rated as far as your financial sound, I think you've dealt with those factors pretty well.
I concur, and I suggest we adopt both of those as our, as our measures and leave it at that.
Those are things that are pretty standard, I think in business you'll see the same thing. They look at those same kind of measures.
I would just caution, you usually have to pay for a bond rating.
Yeah, I know, but I think you pay for a GFOA, distinguished, uh, budget award, you pay for those kinds of things, and those are things that, you don't have to do it every year, but you, you set it up like every other year, every three years, or whatever you can do, you can set up a rating.
Forgive me, what is the cost on that typically?
Well, usually it's in, uh, connection with an actual bond issuance, and it's a percentage of the total bond amount.
Okay, so if we...
That's usually 35, 50,000.
Quite a bit of money for a city of the size, then.
That's in a large bond deal, I mean, if you want to get something from Moody's cheaper, you can.
Yeah.
You know, I mean...
Well, Steve, given your experience, what would something of the city, the size of the city be?
You wouldn't do it every year, but I think you could do it over a number of years, and say, every two, three years, you're something, you just have a, an asset rating. I think you could come up with something, and I, I don't have, I mean, as a starting point, I think that's what we look at, and I mean, we have to tweak it, we tweak it and say that isn't going to be a valid measure for us, because it's gonna cost, but, you know, it, that, those are pretty intense reviews of your financial stability, candidly, we really are.
I mean, I just thought an audit, because we have to do those anyway.
Right, at a, at a minimum, well then, why don't we just, why don't I strike that second, uh, item as a formal measure, only from the standpoint of, of cost, because then you're kind of pinned in there, and if there's an unfortunate upside surprise to that cost, something greater than what the city could absorb, and we don't want to go there, but let's establish the CAFR rating, a quote-unquote clean bill of health, as the measure for financial stability, and then...
Well, I, I would caution that, and the reason I would say I suggested the other, a CAFR rating does not say that you're handling things, it says you're handling things appropriately from a GASB perspective. It doesn't say you're financially sound.
Okay.
It only says you are handling things with respect to our procedures are in place, are, we're following our policies, et cetera.
How about the GAS, uh, the CAFR, and then that, maybe a second one would be that we maintain our, um, reserves balance target.
Of 50%.
You could do that, I mean, however you want to do it. I don't, I, you could do that, I, I just caution because you create a little bit of, of inflexibility there or something like that, because...
Having the external viewpoint is important.
I, I, I mean, I think at times it's worth going out there and say, what is an outside rating agency, look at the finances of this city and say, is it sound? Are you following correct practices, and do we believe, I mean, they are very intense, they'll interview every one of you when they're rating, they'll look at your budget, they'll look at all, they'll look at your CAFR, they'll look at everything you're doing, external audits, they'll look at, uh, funding grants and how they rate you and how they, you know, they're very, very, very intense.
I will say they're intense.
That's the best measure of...
I will say they're intense now, in 2008, before the meltdown, some would argue you could buy a rating, but that's a different issue, yeah.
Well, now, we don't have enough money to buy it.
That's true. But I think that... I think we should, I think we should include it, because I'm not, I wouldn't be dissatisfied if I were you to say that we're following accounting practices, because I don't know that, you know, before the bankruptcy, the county of Orange was following accounting practices.
Yes.
Were they following sound financial investment policies?
That's probably...
Probably not. All right, so I would say there's a double measure here, and if I were buying a business, I would look both.
I'd agree with, uh, those are the two we should use, but, uh, what about the second part of it? How are we gonna communicate this to the Villa Park residents?
We do it in the, you do it every council meeting.
Every council meeting, yeah, it's in the, it's in the agenda, it also comes out in our audit.
I would say the audit, the budget.
The audit, and it comes out in our budget.
Yeah.
And we publish, we publish our audit on our website.
We have a ba- we have a balanced budget that comes in on time every year.
Correct.
We, and that, that's huge, we have an audit that is sound, and that's another measurement, and then monthly we provide the financial statements for them to review.
Your cash flow analysis and those things.
The cash flow, I mean, we do 10 pages, so...
Okay, so we're using two measures that Steve talked about, the audit and the...
In the rating?
Yeah.
Well, um, at this point, I don't know if anybody in the room really knows how much a, a rating would cost, um, would a...
You can get a, you can get an overall rating that's not associated with a, a bond.
That's true.
And you can just, do an assessment, and that's going to be a city of this size, it's not going to require a lot of extra work. You're still paying, but I think, I think what we need to do is set it up as a measure, let's look into it, between now and December 19th, I could say, man, that's gonna be cost prohibitive, we don't want to mess, we're gonna have to not, but I think...
Okay.
We ought to set that as a goal.
That's true.
I think that's a realistic sort of thing to set, may, tell me to go look at it, because I think it's a valid measurement of us.
Okay. Okay?
And sometimes, sometimes an outside look on your eyes, I don't care if it costs, you know, if it's $20,000, maybe it's $20,000 well spent that we ought to look at.
Yeah, okay.
So I, I don't want to say that it's, you know, rule it out just because there's a cost to it.
Okay.
See?
Okay, so, shall we...
Are we okay with those two?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to the next one.
All right, the last one is, uh, sell tape collaboration among Villa Park residents to assess community needs, identify facilities, programs necessary to meet those needs, and define the processes and funding sources to support those facilities and programs.
That's true.
Um, the last item on page two has key success measures kind of relative to this, but again, they were written, uh, under the original, uh, vision statement that had the, uh, the bulleted priorities. But community centers open by a certain date, community parks, uh, open by a certain date, and...
Where are the community park, where's the community, we don't have, we can't, I don't think we need to put that in there, we don't have any land, so you can't have a park if you don't have land, and we don't have something in here that says that we're buying somebody's house to make it a park, you gotta, can't have a park without land, so I, I would have that removed.
I think sufficient measure for this one, if we have a community center open at a specific date.
Well, um, I think...
Well, the date's 2022.
Or...
Yeah.
It's five years from now.
You want to put them all off, I thought...
Well, no, because you have five years to get, you have five years to get there, I mean, I don't think that it's our, we're, I don't think this is a stage where we have to say that we're gonna have it built in two years, what we're saying in five years, we would have put those in place.
I think what we talked about earlier was, uh, community centers are a reality by the target deadline, five years from now.
Yeah, 2022, yeah.
So it's, it's a reality, it doesn't mean that it's necessarily built, but at least we, you know, it's reality, we've got the plans set, we've figured out how we're gonna do this, yeah.
Right.
Can I, um, just want to interject something, when you read this, it says Villa Park residents to assess community needs, and what we're doing is we're focusing the entire community needs on a community center. Community needs may be much different than that, maybe youth programs, it may be all kinds of different things that are, we're, that we have to facilitate to help the community.
Well, I agree, but I don't think we're the type of community, I don't think we need to offer youth programs in here, I think the type of city that we are, because we're fortunate to have the four schools here, we are also fortunate to be next door to the city of Orange, that city of Orange collaborates with the city of Villa Park.
I can name one, and I disagree with you.
Okay, and that's okay.
I can name one.
What is that?
The, the, uh, UCI Irvine has a, has a sporting event now that's gaming, and I've had conversations with the UCI Irvine people about creating, uh, an environment here in a high school to draw from to the school. That's a youth program.
Right, well, they have, but they have that, not with UCI, they have it with Southern Atlantic College.
They don't have it with UCI.
Not with UCI, they don't have it with UCI.
So I'm talking about scholarship programs and things like that to be drafted into their, into their program, so that's just an example.
Sure, that is, that's a great example, but that would be a collaboration between OUSD and UCI, we don't need to do that, we could talk with OUSD and have them do that, which is what they do.
Maybe in a community center, it may not be in a high school.
Okay, got it.
That make sense?
I do.
So I'm just saying, when we talk about community needs, it's much broader than just one thing, I think, just my opinion.
Oh, would you have another?
These measures were written...
Like trails, you know what, communities, you're correct.
Yeah.
And not, if I think outside the box here, because we do, people want a trail down Center Avenue, they want to walk down Center, okay, Lemon is far away, so that is a measure you need, which is in a center, but the trail coming down there is, so, um, okay.
So how do we facilitate the collaboration to meet the needs of the community?
Town hall meetings, your surveys and your town hall meetings, that's how you come up with what people want. I mean, you're back to your surveys, you're back to, you know, interviewing the people that move in here.
That's what you think.
You know, I, I look at the, uh, sports that are active in, um, uh, at our, at our schools, uh, club soccer, um, volleyball, um, Little League, Little League's a huge one.
National Junior Basketball.
Yeah, National Junior Basketball, exactly, that's right around the corner, um, obviously our scouting troops, that's a big part of it, so I want to incorporate that into the overall picture, and how we do that, I'm not sure, but I think tho- those are important, very important.
Without a Parks and Recs, that's difficult, but how do you incorporate it? I mean, you can actively advertise them on your website.
Yep, simple.
Um, I mean, that, that's just what you do, um, you know, you just have a, on our website, we have one particular sheet that says, for more information on Villa Park baseball or Villa Park, you know, soccer, or what, I mean, it's there.
I think there are probably...
Which is more than what we have now.
Steve, any recommendations?
Agreed.
I would agree with the council, that's hard, but, you know, we don't control the school fields, we don't have the, we don't have a Parks and Rec department, it's a challenge.
All of this is, I think all we can do is provide information.
How about promote? How about we could state we, we will promote youth so, youth, uh, programs on our city website? We're not...
In collaboration with them.
In collaboration.
If they want it, we'll promote it, it's in collaboration.
Right, we're, we're not saying this is the end-all, be-all organization or a club or entity, but when they approach us, saying, hey, would you please advertise, we're having signups on such and such date, if you're interested, blah, 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 blah. Would that work?
That's an action step, it's not a measure.
I still think the community center falls under this.
Well, community center is on the priority list over here, but it isn't necessarily consistent with this language, so, you know, rewrite this language.
It talks about identify the facilities and programs necessary to meet these needs. I think it does meet those needs.
Increase the promotion, increase, that's, that is miserable, the promotion of local community organizations on the city website. Right now, we have zero. If we go to one, we've met our goal. Obviously, we'd like to go higher than that. Not to mince words, but hey, if we're trying to achieve...
Well, no, you're right, I think we have three, but, I, I agree, that's, that's good enough.
Well, sorry, I'm speaking of those particular entities, there are other things that are being advertised, so, but...
I think that's good enough, we say, you want to play basketball, you're gonna go down here, we have the basketball's name, we have the Little League's phone number, we at least have a link to the website, and that's...
OJSC Soccer, there's Anaheim, OC Surf, there's National Junior Basketball, there's this, that, and whatever, there's maybe Water Bowl, or, uh, this, that, and whatever organization.
It says and define the process and funding sources to support those facilities and programs, so how are you supporting them?
Well, that's, no funding is required.
And increasing the promotion...
Yes.
Of those, we're increasing the promotion.
Right.
If we are limited right now, if we have a miserable amount right now, which is three, or zero in some cases, and we work with those entities...
When you say three, what does three mean?
We stated, somebody said there were stated, there's three organizations that are being...
Yeah, we already have like some names already on, on our website, it's there.
All right, okay, so, above and beyond what we have, we're increasing the number above and beyond what we have.
Yeah, that's, that's not much of a challenge, though.
Well, it's more, it's more than what we have, though, we don't have it.
Yeah, I mean, we gotta take baby, we have to take babies, and how do we, how do we get a miserable here?
We're supposed to do more than that.
Well, I, I, I agree, I would, the community centers is a huge thing, and, and I'm fully supportive of, of trying to achieve that goal, but I'm, I'm in lockstep with Deanna and Robbie on this, I want to see more emphasis on those programs.
As parents that could, I'm gonna give you a great example, parents who used to go to the school, you, they used to be able to allow these organizations to put their flyers at the school, they don't do that anymore, so if someone moves in and they want to, you know, their daughter wants to go play dance or whatever, they have to go around and ask everybody.
Yeah.
But if we do have, uh, groups that we could just put their phone numbers, that says, these are activities, and that's what the city of Orange does, and they just have phone numbers, that's the promotion, here, phone number, link to the website, if you want to dance, you want to play volleyball, and it is a huge benefit...
Agreed.
...when you're looking to do something with your 11-year-old.
I think one of the things we've talked about anyway is trying to create a community calendar on our, uh, things, so if, you know, if there are, on our website, so for the instance, there was major soccer tournaments or Little League All-Stars or whatever, you have something at least programmed onto our, or school events or something along those, so it's not just sports, but you have other activities that are as well.
Okay, how about the measurement, here's another, just use the measurement that we will, uh, uh, not increase, but we will, uh, maintain a calendar of city events, because we don't have everything, we now have a librarian, has speakers in here at least once, and we don't have that, that we will maintain a calendar of, uh, city-oriented events, and that right there is a measurement.
With, with, with links to...
With links to where it's going.
To where, you know, who and what, so we can connect to, you know...
Our consultant is saying that's not a metric.
It's an action step, maintaining a calendar is an action step.
He's really beginning to frustrate me, I'm kidding.
Not a measure.
I, I'd like to bring the council back to what I think this last strategy is really saying, it's, it's not a strategy that was meant to address any group that currently exists. It says, facilitate collaboration among Villa Park residents to assess community needs, in other words, what would we like to do, what would we like to see that doesn't exist today?
But they do exist, and you just have to drive by the schools and see the banners, because they don't have any place to put that, so instead of us trying to take what we want and stick it in your little pattern here, why don't you take the little pattern here and adjust it to us?
Well, but it's not my pattern, Councilwoman.
Well, I'm using that pattern, right.
You, you approved these...
Okay, well, let's, let's change it, because we all know what we're talk, we all know what we want to promote here for our residents, so let's figure out a way to get what we want to promote, allowing families, adults, if they want to pay Pinochle, and we know there's a Pinochle Club, we're gonna put the Pinochle Club phone number on there, and that's what we want to accomplish, so help us put something on here so we could do that.
We could do the Pinochle Club in the community center, in fact, in fact, uh, we started with our priority was community center, one of the five priorities we had, yet you're gonna leave it out now at the end.
Oh, no, I want the community center, no, 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 no.
No, 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 the community, this is the community center as well as another item, this is in addition to...
But so, is the community center being opened at a specific date, going to be part of this strategy?
Well, no, we already said that.
Just as being a reality.
Yeah, make, make it a reality.
It should be open, shouldn't just be a reality, five years is gonna be a reality.
Are you writing a check?
Exactly.
I want to take it, put it in the account.
First off, we start this process with the, with the foundation, do you think they want to wait five years?
Well, of course not.
Is that their plan to be?
But they don't have a check, okay?
Bill, of course not, but this is a big check.
Their plan is to be less than five years.
I am not going to-
We need Elon Musk. We need Bill Gates. This is a big number.
It depends upon, you know, this, the, the community center has started and failed several times at Villa Park.
Yeah, I know that.
And, and primarily because it was all about private funding. Okay? It was not about city funding or bonds or higher taxes or anything else. So there's no guarantee from the city council that, that a community center will be built in five years. If they can't raise the money initially, it'll die.
Or we don't have the funds to maintain it.
Right.
Because it has to be maintained after it's built.
It's not just about building it, but you got to maintain it. You got to put staff there. You've got to do all kinds of things. It's got to be self-funded.
So that's why I, I would exercise some extreme caution in setting a specific date on that.
That's right.
As much as I want a miserable. The reality. I concur.
All right, all right.
Sorry, sorry, Bill. Four, four of us really agree with that.
We all want it. We all want it. We just don't, just don't have the money.
I think it's a common theme amongst all five of us in the community. We want a community center.
Right.
But-
We have to-
We've a long ways to go.
No, I just think you have to be more aggressive if you want to accomplish.
Well, I know.
You're walking this weekend going to collect money for that.
No, no, you find, you find creative ways to do it.
Right. No, and, and we agree. We agree that not only do we need to do it-
You might be able to get private funding.
But try, but setting a date, but setting a date without-
All right, all right, I give, I give up.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you.
I give up.
All right, so a community center is-
Do you have an answer for Vince and I, how you're going to write this?
All right, all right. I'll settle for that.
So you need, you need to give Vince and I an answer how you're going to quantify us having activities on our website. Because the goal is for us to put, just have a, a yellow page, if you will, on our website.
He said, he said that's an action rather than a strategy.
I, I think creating that calendar involves meeting and facilitating what they want and need because they'll talk to you.
Yes.
If you don't create this in a void, I mean, they're going to say, yeah, just put this date on. They're going to say, yeah, you know what? We need this, we need that. So I, by nature of creating this-
That's a miserable.
I'm not saying it's not, yeah.
No, 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 no. I'm saying facilitating collaboration.
Saying it's an action step.
So we are meeting with those groups to even establish that. So I think that's an ongoing process. So I, I, I would say-
Okay.
That I, I kind of think we are kind of getting there. It's not, it's not, it's a very subjective, hard-to-nail-down type of thing in the first place. But, but I think you're trying to get to, let's meet with them, let's, that's, and they're going to say, you know what? What we really need is access to send out feeder notices to your residents, or can we do this, or can we do that, or whatever. We got a big soccer event. Can we, you know, whatever, and those kinds of things. And programs are going to say, we also need this space, or can you help us with the school district on field space, or whatever.
The other, the other thing you could say is establishment of a social media platform that enables community assessment and, and, and communication of community needs. That's, that's something you can put. I know that's an action step, but that's something you can put in there.
Yeah, that's-
And you can measure whether you're doing that on a monthly basis to facilitate that.
Or you can just do it.
Yeah.
Just do it and you succeed. Okay.
My pen died. I'm sorry.
Here.
No, I've got another one.
Jim.
Jim.
Right there.
We're almost done.
Oh, we did?
We're almost done. I was hoping one would do the SWOT analysis, so we're going to pass on that. Jim, did, did you get all of those?
Yeah, I think I did. I've, I've got the community calendar. I've got increasing promotion of community organizations on the website. And I had the, the community center, but now I'm wondering, all my attention was diverted.
You have to have the community center.
You, you had the community center. What, what did you say?
That it's a reality. The community center is a reality.
Community center is a reality by-
I've got that one.
By six twenty-two, right?
I've got that.
Okay.
That's number one.
So there's two measured, two or, two or three or whatever.
Well, I've got three. I've got creating a calendar, a community calendar on the website. And we're going to measure that by a certain date, or how do you want to measure that with council meeting?
I was saying, are you going to measure by what date you're going to have it up?
That's, that's, that's measured by the needs of, of the input of the community. I mean, we do get people who come in here who say, you know what, we're having a soccer tournament, we want to give you a flyer. And then the staff puts it on there.
Well, okay, but measures are metrics.
I think he's asking when you're going to have it up and running.
Their dates, their percentages, their numbers, their dollars.
Six twenty-two.
Six twenty-two. I mean, this whole thing is by six twenty-two. I don't know why we have to, we can't say it's going to be a year because we don't have-
And it's also out of our control, you know, city council, because this is going to be a privately funded project.
Right.
But we're going to, we want to help make it a reality.
Okay.
Okay.
You have it all, Jim?
Yes.
Do we have anything else?
No.
So, well, we aren't, are we voting on this? Or we just giving directions?
Yeah.
Well, it's hard to vote on it.
This is one of those-
Well, we, we, he has them all written down. I don't remember them all.
I don't want to vote on it if it's not written down, but I, I want, I want to ask something. You're going to go to the public with this. And I do believe that that draft needs to come to us in enough time, just like minutes, for us to make sure that this is the, what we all agree and somehow or another-
Well, that's what I was just saying, is-
We're going to have to approve it independently to you. And that's been done before, where we approved the minutes of that before that goes to the public. And that doesn't mean the day before.
Well, that's what I'm kind of looking for is if, you know, is this, because it's going to be released, I mean, next.
Five seven.
By what date, since this is, is not a council meeting per se, is it under different advance notice?
It's an event notice, it's just-
All you got to do is have it that day.
Have it that night.
But you can't give it to us the day before.
Oh, no. I would have no intention of doing that.
We could schedule another meeting next week, too.
But we can do it independently.
Well, independently.
I mean, just do it independently and report back to him.
I'm gone on next week, so I can't.
There's, there's no meeting.
So we do it independently. Can you send, can you send it out, say?
I think that's what we need to do, is give him direction of what you want done. And you can, he can distribute that, what his draft was, and those, I think you can ask for anybody to give corrections to that.
Oh, absolutely.
So you can independently give corrections back to him.
You want it back to him or back to you?
Well, I copy both of us. I mean, I want to see, but yes. For purposes, I'd like to see.
If I'm the one developing the draft, I-
Well, I understand, but I'm, I'm looking at it like an approval of minutes and, and you giving it to-
I would like to see it, yes.
I, I want, I prefer for it to come from Steve, and I return it to Steve and he can give it to you. It's almost like, it's just an approval of the minutes because we did vote on things today.
Right.
So that's how I'm looking at it. I want to, if we voted on stuff, we need to make sure that we voted on it correctly.
I want to get with you when we-
And you can send it to-
Because I want to make sure what's in my notes-
And I'm looking forward to that.
-are consistent to yours. And we, we don't necessarily have to meet. It can be on the phone.
We're good.
But, uh-
We have the language that we need to, for the motion, then?
I, I don't think we need a motion at this one. I think what we've got is clear direction from the council. So I don't think there's a necessary motion. There, there, you know, from, from recording for the purpose of the minutes, they'll just simply say, direction provided to staff.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine.
Are you willing to receive it on a weekend?
Sure.
I can try for tomorrow.
We'll get it out to you in sufficient time to me. I don't-
How about, how about Monday? Would Monday be sufficient?
No, Sunday would be good because at least I have one weekend, one weekend day would be good.
Well, if the city manager has time tomorrow, I mean, I probably won't drive back to Villa Park, but climb on the phone with him for a half hour or so and go through each of these.
You know what, on my own, we, we'll figure that out.
Or do you have a tight day tomorrow?
Do you wish your day like tomorrow? You already have-
We'll figure it out. We'll get it to you.
We'll just have it to us no later than Sunday. How's that?
So what, what the expectation would be is you see basically what was approved tonight.
Yes.
Correct.
So I need that from him, so it's up to you. I'm going to look at it. I'll compare it with my notes. I don't want to, I don't want to jointly write it.
Yes, because once we, once we all put our changes in, and he does that, we need to have that final copy before you take it to the, to the public. I don't, you can't just take it without, you know. By the sixth, you have to give, you know, six during the day, you need to give us the final copy to make sure that we know what's going to the public.
And if anything, you'll have it before then. Because if, if I give you a copy and there still are more changes, then I'm up all night the night before December seventh finishing up a draft plan in which-
Okay.
I would caution too. This is, this is a draft.
Right.
And it is a draft. So, I mean, if there are things that say we pick out on the sixth, like, oh, that's not exactly right. It's still draft. I mean, we're not, not until the nineteenth does it matter, or whenever the adoption is, where your final version is. So, you know, I'm, I'm worried about content.
I think the concern is warranted, though, because the purpose of the seventh is to unveil a document that we're seeking their input on. And if the council still, you know, intends to make changes, you know, outside of whatever comments they get on December seventh, then the community hasn't seen, you know, a draft.
Well, they'll see it, they'll see it at the council meeting. It's posted.
Okay.
I think we're, I think we're on board. I don't want to participate on it.
So we're good?